I would like to call the regular meeting of the Bellflower City Council to order Monday, April 28, 2025, here at the council chambers at 5:30. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Morse?
Here.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Here.
Mayor Protem Santinas?
Here.
Councilmember Coops?
Mayor Dutton?
Here.
Mr. Smoot, closed session item.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There's only one item, item 3A. The council recessed to closed session for conference with legal counsel initiation of litigation under government code section 5495, 6.94.
One correction, Mr. Mayor, there's been a change in the ownership. It is now JJR Holdings LLC rather than Jaime Alejandre. That is the only change to the recommended action.
Fair enough. No one in the audience, I see. So we're going to adjourn to closed session. All right, I'm going to call the Bellflower City Council, regular meeting to order Monday, April 28, 2025, at 7 o'clock. And we are reconvening from our regular closed session and reconvening to the regular meeting, and there was no reportable action. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Morse?
Here.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Here.
Mayor Protem Santinas?
Here.
Councilmember Coops?
Here.
Mayor Dutton?
Here.
May I have everybody rise for the invocation led by Mayor Protem Sunny Santa Inez and the pledge of allegiance by Lynn Gurecki, our assistant or city manager, director of public works.
Please bow your heads in prayer. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the gift of life, the gift of family, the gift of community called the seat of Bellflower. We thank you for all the blessings that you have bestowed upon us. We thank you for giving us this wonderful city, our wonderful residents. We thank you for giving us our dedicated staff. Please continue to guide them as they serve our residents. We thank you for giving us our members of the military, our first responders. Please keep them and their families safe so that they can continue to keep us safe. As we gather tonight to discuss the items before us, please give us the wisdom, guide us, and enlighten us so that we can decide what's best for our community as a whole. We ask this in your mighty name. Amen.
Amen.
Place your right hand over your heart and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we're going to do council announcements. I'll start. The city of Bellflower is proud to celebrate National Small Business Week from May 4 through the 10th. Small Business Week businesses are the heart of our community, and we recognize the hard work, resilience, and entrepreneurial spirit that they all bring to Bellflower. Residents are encouraged to support local businesses throughout the week by visiting their favorite local shops, restaurants, service providers. Whether it's grabbing a cup of coffee at a local neighborhood cafe or buying a gift from the local boutique, every purchase helps strengthen the local economy. For more information about Bellflower's small business programs and resources, please call 562-804-1424, extension 210. Mayor Protem Santinas?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Have documents you need to dispose of securely? Bellflower's Day of the Shred returns to Thompson Park located at 14001 Bellflower Boulevard on Saturday, May 17, from 8 to 11 a.m. The shredding truck will be on-site to provide free document shredding for Bellflower residents only. Each household may bring up to five boxes or bags of paper. The accepted materials include paper file folders, wedge staples, rubber bands, and small binder clips. Please do not bring phone books, hardcover books, plastics, metals, CDs, trash, or hazardous materials. This service is available on a first-come, first-served basis until the truck reaches capacity. Empty boxes or bags must be taken home. For more information, please call 562-866-750. Does all have mayor?
Thank you, Mayor Protem Sunny Santinas. Councilmember Victor Sanchez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Bellflower. You may pay tribute to Bellflower's military heroes with the Bellflower Honors Program, which offers residents the opportunity to dedicate a street pole banner or an inscribed brick in recognition of a local veteran. Your contribution creates a lasting tribute to our local veterans, ensuring that their sacrifices are remembered for generations to come. Street pole banners will be displayed along Flower Street and Alondra Boulevard between Woodruff Avenue and Bellflower Boulevard for one calendar year from the installation date. Commemorative bricks will be placed in a reflection area at the Veterans Memorial located at 9918 Flower Street, serving as tribute to those who served. For more information, please call 562-804-1424, extension 2258. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Sanchez. Councilmember Dan Coops?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Bellflower Leadership Experience and Development Program, it's called LEED, offers local teens a unique opportunity to engage with their community while building essential life and leadership skills. This summer, LEED will host an eight-week session designed to help students in their graduating classes of 2026 through 2029 prepare for life after high school. Meeting once a week, the participants will explore topics such as interview techniques, team-building exercises, and general job readiness. LEED provides a supportive environment where students can build confidence and develop tools to help them succeed beyond high school. Applications for the summer session are open May 1 through June 6. For more information, please call 562-804-1424, extension 2331, or contact online mhardy@bellflowercalifornia.gov. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Coops. Councilmember Wendy Morris?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Bellflower. Enjoy an afternoon of feel-good favorites with the Bellflower Civic Chorus on Saturday, May 3 and Sunday, May 4. Performed by a mixed voice chorus of singers and music lovers, this concert takes place at 2:30 p.m. at the William &amp; Jane Bristol Civic Auditorium located at 16600 Civic Center Drive, Bellflower. All right, over here. For more information, please call 562-773-2535, or 562-865-8622. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Wendy Morris. Okay.
Bless you.
Bless you. All right, we're going to go into presentations right now. And I'm just thinking how we want to do this. I'm going to call all the, we've got certificates of achievement for four students for there being the art festival winners. I'm going to have the district representative, Senator Bob Archuleta, also meet us up here on the riser for handing out their certificates. And then I'm going to call the winner applicants, Elia Vasquez, Sophia Gachilio, Jacqueline Wang, and Keela Francia. And that's, these schools are from Dominic Savio, Valley Christian, Valley Christian, and Washington Elementary. And then we'll talk about them on the riser. Mayor Dutton?
Stand behind you. You're the kid.
Just kind of stand behind.
All right.
Wow.
Step one foot forward a little bit.
All right. Which one's Elia? You, okay. I got a certificate for you, and I want to read this here. This certificate, you're in the third grade at St. Dominic Savio Elementary, and you're a winner of this art festival. And on behalf of myself, the mayor of the city, and my council colleagues, we want to give you this certificate of achievement. Yeah. Sophia, which one? Is it you? Yeah. And Sophia is the fourth grade from Valley Christian Elementary, is also a winner of the art festival. And on behalf of the mayor, myself, and my colleagues, we want to, on the city of Bellflower, we want to wish you the best with this achievement and congratulations. And Jacqueline is, and this is for Jacqueline Wang, fifth grader from Valley Christian Elementary. And also, on behalf of the mayor of Bellflower and the city council, we just want to congratulate you and wish you all the best. Also, here's your certificate. And then Keila Francia, sixth grader from Washington Elementary School. And we want to congratulate you on behalf of the city of Bellflower, being the mayor, and my colleagues. We want to say thank you very much for entering.
It's good evening. My name is Carla Casares, and I'm here on behalf of California State Senator Bob Archuleta, your state senator for the 30th district. And I had the pleasure of being at the competition, at the festival, and seeing all of the artwork. And wow, yours really did stand out. So on behalf of the senator, I have certificates. They read in recognition of your creativity and hard work as a third, fourth, fifth, and sixth grader student for carrying, excuse me, for earning first place at the City of Bellflower Student Art Festival held on March 22, 2025. Your artistic talent and imagination brighten our community and inspire others. So, behalf on the 30th district of the state of California, I commend you for your outstanding achievement and dedication to the arts. Signed, Senator Bob Archuleta.
All right. Carla, did you want to say anything on Bob Archuleta's behalf? Okay, I know you did, but just double-checking. Not often we get, not often we have the senator's representative here.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, kids. Does any of the parents want to come up and take pictures? You want an opportunity to take pictures?
I took 50 of them.
Okay. All right, you're excused now. Usually, we have a lot of cameras coming at us. All right, item 10 is public comments. Mr. Smoot, you want to read it in the record?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the time set aside for the public to address the city council on matters not listed on the agenda. Anyone wishing to address the city council should come to the podium, be recognized by the mayor, and state your name for the record. And if you wish to address the city council on an agenda item, you may do so by approaching the podium as we review that particular item. You'll be given three minutes to address the city council.
So anybody wishing to come forward, now's the time. Sign in and state your name. And you have three minutes to talk about anything that is not on our public agenda tonight.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. It's been a little bit since I've seen you. My name is Brian Beretto, and I serve as California American Water's Southern California External Affairs Manager. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. California American Water has a strong legacy and presence in the Los Angeles region, where we have provided water service for over 50 years. And the company is committed to providing customers with high-quality, reliable water service and our ongoing infrastructure investments improve reliability to help keep water service flowing for our customers. California American Water acquired the city of Bellflower's municipal water system in 2022 and has since made several upgrades to our system, utilizing the company's scale and expertise to improve service to approximately 1,800 homes and businesses in the city of Bellflower. I'd like to provide you with a brief update on our recent investments. California American Water recently completed a $4.5 million water main replacement project in System 5, which replaced 8,510 linear feet of aging 4-inch and 6-inch asbestos cement water mains with new 8-inch ductile iron pipes. It installed new service lines for 170 customers, upgraded 13 fire hydrants, and replaced 39 gate valves. In 2024, System 4 water main replacement project was completed. This $3 million project replaced 6,115 feet of 4-inch asbestos cement and steel mains on Maplewood Street, Cloverwood Street, Glendon Street, Artist Avenue, Blaine Avenue, and Somerset Boulevard with 8-inch ductile iron pipes. In addition, California American Water invested $2 million in System 2, replacing approximately 3,500 linear feet of aging water mains located on Jefferson Street, Lehe Avenue, Cable Avenue, and Somerset Boulevard. We utilized the city's $5 million grant to fund the construction of the projects in System 4 and System 2. Our operations and engineering teams are in Bellflower every day monitoring the water system and completing ongoing hydrant and valve maintenance. California American Water plans to additionally invest in the system's infrastructure. Between 2002 and 2027, the company will invest more than $10 million in the Bellflower water system, including upgrading or replacing water mains that are nearing the end of their useful lives, replacing valves and hydrants, upgrading water meters, and installing new treatment. Current Bellflower customers have access to our robust water conservation rebates, free water-saving devices, customer payment options, customer service center, and our web self-service portal, My Water. California American Water's acquisition of the city's water system provides customers with access to long-term, reliable water supply, and we look forward to continuing our service to the customers in Bellflower. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I don't know if it's on, but I just want to follow up on what he said. My street just had the new pipe put in, and I had sent an email to him and their company. They did the best job. My gosh, they were wonderful. When they delivered gravel or sand or anything, they had somebody out there hosing it down so the sand, the dust didn't spread everywhere. We were never stuck in our driveways. The workers were wonderfully nice. I mean, they really, and when anything went wrong, they were out there immediately to fix it. We got a new fire hydrant across the street from us, too. But I just wanted to follow up and tell you, they did a wonderful, wonderful job. Thank you.
Thank you, Cheryl. Anybody else?
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor, council people. I live over by Bellflower High School.
What's your name?
Tony Veltrey.
I'm sorry, what?
Tony Veltrey.
Okay, good, thank you.
I live over by Bellflower High School, and there's only one crosswalk on McNabb and Hayford, which is Ron Yeri, and nobody can get out of our complex. They, when school's out, you can't get in. There's, and people are crossing all over the place. There's also on Saturdays, and I brought this up before, the city of the Bellflower High School has soccer matches, and because they charge the parking lot, people are all over the street and the curbs and everywhere. We can't get out again. So I would like to bring that to your attention. And also, the mail theft, we've had twice where mail has been stolen. We reported it. We talked to the postal inspector. The city of Bellflower, the Bellflower Post Office does not care. They just need to replace locks, the master locks. They don't want to do it. We have a great picture of the guy doing it. We made a cop, we filed with the sheriff's department, but again, it's a postal inspector. But something has to be done. We know the post office is bad. We know people are stealing things. This guy was blatant at 5:30 in the morning, came and used the master locks. Nobody seems to care about this post office. It is getting bad. And we have a lot of older people in our complex, so they won't do online. So I just, you know, I don't know what we could do about it, but it's getting bad. And who changed the signal at McNabb and Alondra? The timing. We're there for 10 minutes getting out. It's bad. It goes blink screen, and then it's stopped.
Maybe it's broke.
I don't know, but they changed it about a month or two ago.
Public Works, Public Works is in the room.
Oh, they are? Somebody changed it?
I'm sure they'll be on it.
Okay, thank you. That was it. Yeah, that was it.
Every one of us up here, I think, has been hit with mail theft already.
It's bad.
Altered checks.
You know, came and, and he closed them. He opened them and closed them.
That was a nice one.
Good evening, good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name's Rick Cook. Just a point of clarification, if you're here to talk about the Edison Project and the executive track, not now?
Not now.
Wait until?
When we, yeah, when we call that item.
I wouldn't like to talk about the traffic lights on Bellflower Boulevard, though.
Go right ahead. We don't got that much time tonight. Imagine the one at Harvard. All right, no more funnies. Let's, anybody else want to talk about something that's not on the agenda? Okay, let's move on then. Okay, Mr. Smoot, you want to read it in the record, item 11A?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item 11A is consideration of possible action to conduct a public hearing to consider an appeal from Robert Priest, representing Design UA Incorporated of the Planning Commission's adoption of Resolution Number PC 24-15 and adopt Resolution Number 24-15, a resolution denying an appeal AP 25-01, and upholding Planning Commission Resolution Number PC 24-15, denying development review DR 3-24-15169, and conditional use permit CU-24-07 for the construction of a 3,786-square-foot restaurant with a drive-through component located at 16211 Bellflower Boulevard.
I'll need to recuse myself from item 11A. I have a property interest. I'm conflicted.
Let the record show that Councilmember Morris is recusing herself due to a property conflict.
And, Mr. Mayor, before Beth and her team take this item for presentation, I want, I do want to identify for you, in recent weeks, we as staff have had some conversations with McDonald's and some of their representatives about some of the items of concern with this project that were raised as part of the review of this project with the Planning Commission. And I wanted to say, if the council wanted to continue this item, we wanted to give you that, to work through some of those issues. We wanted to give you that opportunity. If the council wants to hear this item tonight and hear the presentation, of course, our staff is more than happy to give you that presentation. So it's entirely in your hands.
All right, we're going to hear the staff report first, and then we'll go into discussion after that. How's that? Yeah, we'll have a chance, because we're going to have to open the public hearing and then leave, you know, at that point, so we can continue it.
And, Mr. Mayor?
Am I right? The public hearing's got to be open to continue it, so we don't notice.
And, Mr. Mayor, for a point of clarification, the members of the audience who are here to speak on the matter can speak?
They can speak. Yeah, let them speak tonight during, or they can come back and speak. If, in event that somebody on this audience, we don't know if it's going to be date certain or not.
Sure.
Can't come back, they're welcome to.
Thank you.
Voice their opinion.
Thank you.
But that'll turn it over to Beth and her team.
Thank you, Mr. Smoot. Honorable Mayor, members of the city council, tonight's presentation is going to be given to you by our associate planner, Catherine Brunton. She'll run through the PowerPoint with you.
Okay.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the city council. This evening, I have the brief presentation for you regarding appeal case number 25-01. The appellant is appealing the Planning Commission's action to, sorry, excuse me, didn't see the light. Okay. The appellant is appealing the Planning Commission's action to deny a conditional use permit to allow a drive-through business and a development review for a new 3,786-square-foot restaurant building for a proposed McDonald's. For some background, the subject property is shown here outlined in red. It is located on the west side of Bellflower Boulevard between Flora Vista Street and Alondra Boulevard. The project site is located within Plan Area 2 of the transit-oriented development-specific plan, also known as the TODSP, and is subject to the general commercial provisions. The existing commercial building is proposed to be demolished and replaced with a new drive-through restaurant. The site is proposed to be accessed from a new driveway on Bellflower Boulevard, shown here. Upon entering the site, customers can park or continue to the drive-through entrance, which starts at the back of the restaurant. This is the entrance to the drive-through. There are two drive-through lanes with menu and ordering points, shown here. It merges into one lane for the first window, which is the payment, the second window, which is the order pickup, and there's also an additional third window for alternate pickups, and then a bypass lane here for vehicles that have already picked up their food or need to go to a waiting parking stall. A total of 24 parking spaces are proposed, and approximately 35% of the site will be landscaped, including a 20-foot-wide landscape planter along Bellflower Boulevard. The traffic analysis and a drive-through queuing analysis were both prepared for the proposed project. The queuing analysis found that an average of five vehicles in the queue during a peak lunch hour and a peak queue of 10 to 13 vehicles. This location has a queuing capacity of 10 vehicles, which is considered sufficient, and any potential excess peak can be accommodated on-site without spilling onto Bellflower Boulevard or the public right of way. The traffic analysis showed that all nearby intersections would continue to operate at acceptable levels of service. A brief project timeline is as follows. On December 16, 2024, the Planning Commission held its first public hearing to consider the proposed project. The meeting was continued to January 6, 2025, to give the appellant time to address issues and concerns with the project. The appellant then submitted three requests to continue the meeting, and on February 5, revised plans were resubmitted. And on February 18, the Planning Commission reopened the public hearing and considered additional information. The commission unanimously voted to deny the project on February 18, and on March 3, a resolution of denial was adopted by the Planning Commission. Following that, on March 11, an appeal application was filed with the city clerk's office. The following is some of the discussion for the findings of denial for the project. First up is the housing element. The commission expressed concern about redeveloping the project site for a new commercial use. The project site is identified as a housing opportunity area in the city's housing element. To meet the goals of the city's regional housing needs allocation, the site To meet the goals of the city's regional housing needs allocation, the site would need to be redeveloped with housing. The appellant did not address these concerns with the Planning Commission. In the appeal application, the appellant indicated that the project site is zoned to allow for commercial drive-through uses with the CUP, and that the housing overlay expands options for what is allowed. According to the appellant, there is no interest for residential development, and the property owner does not plan on engaging with a residential developer. The appellant contends that prior to submitting a project application, that they met with city staff to discuss the project and were informed that there was no issue with the future residential overlay on the site that has now been adopted. The second item is the project site access. So, the Commission expressed concern about access to and from the project site. The Commission asked the appellant to seek other ingress and egress possibilities, such as a reciprocal access agreement with the property owner to the north, the Aldi and Blink Fitness site, or by purchasing and merging with the property to the south. The appellant was unsuccessful at negotiating a reciprocal access agreement and did not alter the project design to include any means of accommodating for northbound traffic into or exiting the site. In the appeal application, the appellant represented that the traffic analysis shows that it is a very low-intensity use that is intended to serve those who are already traveling on Bellflower Boulevard. Any development on the site will only have one point of ingress and egress, and the adjacent property to the north will not provide for a reciprocal access agreement for this project or any future project. The Commission also expressed concern that delivery trucks would block traffic on Bellflower Boulevard while entering and exiting the site. The appellant represented to the Commission that they did not analyze if a 40-foot delivery truck could access the project site with center median delineators installed, as conditioned by staff. In the appeal application, the appellant stated that a 26-foot dual-access straight truck would be used for deliveries and would be able to access the site without any impact on Bellflower Boulevard. Bicycle and pedestrian trail. The Commission expressed concern that the project site is in close proximity to the bicycle and pedestrian trail, which has a higher-than-average pedestrian traffic. The appellant addressed this by adding an outdoor dining area and enhanced landscaping to attract pedestrians and bicyclists, bicyclists to the business, but did not address the safety concerns. In the appeal application, the appellant contends that the traffic analysis shows that the business will not add vehicle trips as it is intended to service those who are already traveling on Bellflower Boulevard, and therefore, there is no safety concern. Additionally, any development of the site could present the same safety concerns. Metro Light Rail Station At Grade Crossing. The Commission expressed concern about the frequency and length of time that the gates would be down at the At Grade rail crossing on Bellflower Boulevard for the metro's proposed southeast gateway line. During peak hours, there will be a train crossing every two and a half minutes within 500 feet of this project site. With a right turn out and exit, sorry, with a right turn out-only exit from the site, all vehicle traffic will be funneled south directly toward the At Grade Crossing. The appellant did not address the issue to the Commission. In the appeal application, the appellant contends that the metro opening date is still unknown and that the traffic analysis shows that the project will not have an impact on traffic and that Bellflower Boulevard will carry the same amount of traffic with or without the project. It is recommended that the City Council open the public hearing, take testimonial and documentary evidence, and after considering the evidence from the public hearing, adopt Resolution Number 25-15, or alternatively, to discuss and take other action related to this item, such as continuation.
Thank you.
And this concludes my...
Any questions of staff at the moment?
Mr. Mayor, before we start, I just want to disclose that I have an expert communication with Mr. Yunus Sajan, and according to him, he is representing McDonald's Corporation. So, I just put it in the record, I have an expert communication.
Mr. Mayor, I would also like to enter into the record the same.
And myself, I'll also enter into the record that I have had communication on two different occasions with consultants and development team on-site. And a senator.
All right, I agree with all four of you. I've done same communication with the group.
Okay. That's it, away. Any questions of staff that anybody have right now? I have one if you want me to.
Let me start, Mr. Mayor. Thank you so much, Ms. Brown, for the presentation. Let me start with, in terms of zoning, what are the permitted uses for this particular property?
So, the underlying zone for this property is commercial general. Commercial general allows for uses by right, such as office uses, commercial retail sales, and food service uses that are not drive-through or have alcohol. Those types of uses require conditional use permits. Additionally, there is the TODSP overlay on the site, and that would allow for pure residential as well as mixed-use residential projects.
Can you repeat again, what are the permitted uses by right?
By right for the CG would be retail, office, and restaurants without drive-through or alcohol.
Okay.
Generally speaking.
So, there are particular businesses that are allowed by right?
That is correct.
Okay. Can you show this slide again for the, the decisions of the Planning Commission? There you go. Okay. I just want to point out a couple of things here. In terms of the egress, ingress and egress, there was a comment made that in terms of traffic, that no additional, no other traffics to Bellflower will be the volume of store and traffic analysis show that there are no added trips in Bellflower. Can you explain what that means?
Yes, so, the traffic analysis that the applicant had prepared and submitted shows that there will be no additional cars for that, no additional trips for that use. So, their analysis shows that the vehicles already traveling on Bellflower Boulevard are going to be the ones that are stopping at the restaurant and then going back onto the street. So, there won't be any trips added in that people are not going out of their way to visit this restaurant.
I, I kind of find it hard to believe, because I, I live north of Alondra, east, west of Bellflower Boulevard. I love McDonald's. It's not an expensive McDonald's. So, if I were to go to this site to buy McDonald's, so my trip will not be considered additional, additional trip?
According to their analysis, it would be, you would already be traveling on Bellflower Boulevard south and stopping.
I'm doing my, I love gardening. I'm doing my gardening, and suddenly I become, oh, it's lunchtime, I'm hungry. I love McDonald's, I want a Big Mac, and then I go to this site. So, that trip is not considered as additional trip?
Not captured in the analysis.
Oh, okay.
Their traffic engineer who prepared the study, I believe, is in the audience, so we can also talk to him.
All right. In, in terms of, you made a comment about the, the southwest, southeast gateway line, that there's no, unknown, the starting date is, let's see. The starting for the, for the metro veil operations is unknown currently. Okay. I have some dates, and I communicated, I want to put in the record, I communicated with
Fernando?
No, 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 no. With the Transportation Deputy for Supervisor Han, who is currently the Metro Board Chair, Viviana Gomez, and she said, and it's on the email, see the email, 2035 is the date. Completed, completed by 2035. And in fact, at the presentation today, we attended a presentation from this Optimist Club. The guest speaker was Carla Caseras, who made a presentation to the kids, and one of the items she reported was that Senator Chuleta was instrumental in securing, securing $231 million from the state towards this line. So, as far as they're concerned, it is ongoing and they're working on it. So, again, but there's no guarantee, but again, there's a target date, and there's some funding coming in. So, that's all I have for now, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I'd like to talk to staff regarding McDonald's elevations. In general, and this is something that you may or may not be able to answer, so it may be a question for the applicant. Have you, are you aware of a practice in which franchises or, you know, such as McDonald's and others amend or modify their, their design to resemble more and more the geographical area that they are actually coming into?
In terms of aesthetics?
In terms of aesthetics.
Yes, and we have often worked with the design team related to that, if that is the direction that the council wants to go. We do consider, we can incorporate that into the design.
Okay.
Or we can, I'm sorry, we can require that the design be more compatible with the area.
Okay, very good. Thank you for that. Then regarding the concerns of the Planning Commission, which also have been mentioned a little bit here, the right turn in and out only. I have a hard time believing that that would truly be the case. Even if we were to do double crossing or double yellows, hu- human nature will make the left, you know, illegally into that restaurant. Has anything, have, has anything been presented, presented as an option to mitigate that if and when this was to be an opportunity?
This was discussed on a staff level. There was some comments or some discussion going back and forth with our traffic engineer at the time, Mr. Jerry Stock, related to exactly that, you know, trying to prevent the left turns coming out of the project site and to prevent, prevent the left turns going into the project site. The recommendation for the CUP was that there be center delineators installed along the center line of Bellflower Boulevard to physically prevent that from occurring. There was a lot of discussion related to those delineators during the Planning Commission meeting. Currently, what is being discussed with the appellant is a modification to Bellflower Boulevard, which would be an alternative to be able to make those left turns in and left turns out. That hasn't been fully vetted yet with our traffic engineer and their traffic engineer, and that is why earlier today, we request, or before the presentation, we requested continuance.
Understood.
But that is another option that's, we're still exploring.
And then lastly, for now, the conversation with Aldi for the reciprocal agreement, has our economic development department had any, have they participated in that at all? In trying to mitigate, or trying to communicate that? Trying to, trying to work some kind of a agreement? Because if I'm not mistaken, sorry, if I'm not mistaken, that is one of the main concerns from Planning Commission. Okay.
I don't know if Jim's team has been involved in that discussion, but I will say Beth's team has certainly been involved in that discussion and reaching out to the property owners and to the tenants in that area to see if that was something that could be feasible.
And that, no, not viable at all?
That's correct. So, Catherine reached out to the property owner of the Aldi site on multiple occasions. She was able to get through to the property manager, and what was relayed back to us was that it was a no. No further explanation, just that it was a no related to reciprocal access.
Okay. And then question regarding the, and this will be my last one for now, Mr. Mayor. I'll turn over the mic back. The, regarding the concerns from the Planning Commission with the delivery trucks, can you elaborate on that for me a little bit? I kind of not understanding that quite well.
Yeah, I can explain this one. So, the Planning Commission expressed concern about a possible 40-foot delivery truck entering and exiting the site. The discussion was more or less related to those center delineators that were proposed to be installed. So, the delineators would have been installed all along the project site frontage, in the middle of the median. So, the concern was if you have a large truck turning in and out of the site, would those delineators prevent access or require multiple, you know, movements to get in and out, therefore blocking the street during that time?
Understood. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
So, the applicant had asked for a continuance in the staff meetings, the latest staff meetings that you've had? Okay.
That's correct, and kind of conversations with them regarding their alternatives. We did discuss a potential continuance so that we can meet with them, too.
Okay, because I was
Look at the alternative.
Talked from, you know, the city manager asked, was, you saw in the record, that, you know, if we want to postpone it. Now I know why, I guess, if there was, then we don't have to ask the applicant. Mayor Protim Santayana said a good point about the, the trips. I didn't buy that either, because you got young ones home and, and Mama Bear says to Dad a bear, Daddy bear, go get some Happy Meals, and you're driving a car down there. Other than that, if you're calling DoorDash or Uber Eats or anything like that, well, they're going to take their car there to pick it up. You know, and I'm sure, and, and the way it's today's technology and fast food restaurants, they're all in it to deliver. It's just the setup. And just like the McDonald's that we just put in on Woodruff and in Artesia, they have lockers that those cars can drive up to and get the stuff. So, there is more trips. The MTA traffic analysis, the most latest and greatest that the city of Bellflower has, does it include the new signal that we put in a year or so ago at Main Street?
Mayor, I do not know. I know that they finished up their EIR, I believe it was sometime last fall.
I, I think that would be some data that we would need to look at, not just that signal, but the one at Harvard. Because we do know during traffic hours, it backs up. And if we got a train coming every two and a half minutes that they say is going to come in 10 years, it's going to be a problem, especially with the signal so close to McDonald's at Flora Vista Street. I don't know of any situation, situation, driving through several cities in my driving career that I've seen delineators in front of a drive-through place on the double yellow to stop people from left turn. I've never seen that, and I've been driving a long time. And I just can't buy that that's the fix of left turn in only. McDonald's is a great corporation and they do a better business than my business, because I need left turn and right turns to come into my business. They can do it, they can make money by in a right turn, God bless them, but that's just not the way that I can foresee it be fixed. There has to be a double yellow, broken double yellow line out in the middle of that, so for left turning for both ways. I have brought this up to the meetings I've had on-site, along with reciprocal parking agreement with the next-door property. That's most likely a no, it sounds like. Have we had a traffic engineer look at the situation at all if the street was widened to be able to put double yellow turning lane from Flora Vista on for 100 feet or so? Is that feasible? I'm not a traffic engineer. I'm just saying, and it's, that would, that would fix stuff.
Mayor, we have not been able to confirm yet with our traffic engineer. We do have a meeting scheduled this Thursday for the McDonald's team and the traffic engineer to discuss. Just in, kind of, in conversations with our Public Works Director, is feasible to be able to include that center aisle? It would just involve a lot of, or a lot of off-street parking being, being eliminated.
So, you're saying if we took out the parking, that we could do the double yellow line center median, right?
Correct.
Why would we want to do that?
At least on first glance, you may be able to do that.
I mean, but why would we want to do that? I mean, I don't know. We just, you know, we got, we already take away the parking for ADUs and converting garages and I just, sometimes it gets to where stuff, it just doesn't make sense. And I know, I just want to stop and go down that road if, if that's it, but, uh... So, there was, with the Planning Commission, when they had this on their lap, the traffic engineer never said, let's look at making the left turn lane out there? A bi-directional left turn lane, I guess you would call it, between double yellow lines? Am I going somewhere I shouldn't be?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this is an appeal, so my suggestion would be to have the public hearing opened, listen from the appellant, provide the evidence, and then ask the questions that you're asking.
Well, I just need to know.
Following the testimony.
I need to know evidence of what was, what was done.
This is, so this is a de novo hearing, meaning that you collect the new evidence as if the other hearing never occurred. So certainly, that is something that you can ask the appellant, and then afterwards ask staff about. But it's important to open the, the public hearing at this point to gather the evidence so then you can make informed decisions thereafter.
No further questions? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to open the public hearing?
Second.
Okay, a motion on the floor by Mayor Protem Santaynez and second by Councilmember Victor Sanchez. Without objection, that'll be the order. Okay, now's the time anybody in the audience can, there's, you know, I'd like to rather hear possibly from the applicant first, but if somebody's on a time limit, come on up.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, actually, this is a public hearing, which requires the appellant to testify first, and then afterward, other people that are interested to testify afterward. And the appellant
I'm sorry, you have to come back.
Has twenty minutes.
All right, who's the representative for the development? Let's come on up here and let's discuss this.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. My name is Troy Stevenson. I am here on behalf of McDonald's with regard to the subject property. One of the things that we'd like to do is, we were formally requesting continuance to evaluate the left turn possibilities for the property. But if you'd like, I can go through the, any questions you have or any testimony you would like to hear.
I was going down a road earlier, not the right direction that attorney wanted me, so I'm going to ask. I've seen the light.
I didn't know if I was to formally request a continuance at the beginning or...
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the appellant's asking for continuance, that's certainly something that you can consider. My suggestion, though, would be to ask anybody that cannot come back, if you were to do a continuance, to testify tonight. So perhaps as a straw vote, you can make a determination whether or not to, you wish to continue the matter, and if not, move forward with public hearing and allow the appellant to provide their case.
Got it.
I have a question, before we decide on that, is there anything new that you would present to us to justify continuing this item?
Yes, there is the possibility of a, the ability to make a dedicated left turn lane for the subject property. And that would actually change the traffic conditions for the site. So it's a very significant design change.
Just on the surface, let's say on the dedicated left turn lane, how many lanes do you anticipate to be on the left turn pocket?
The left turn.
The left turn. There's going to be a pocket, right? Just one car?
Yeah, no, uh...
Double yellow, broken double yellow.
Yes.
So there's no
Center, painted center median.
So there's no left turn pocket?
No, I don't believe so.
You don't? Okay.
It's, it's a dedicated left turn for that, that we're discussing.
Uh, going north?
Yes.
Okay, going north, you're going to make a left turn. So there's no dedicated lane for the left turn pocket?
Mr. Mayor Protem, I would suggest this is something you'd want to have your traffic engineers, perhaps their traffic engineers as well, review in some detail, because you have an intersection within a close proximity there, and you have parking on both sides, you have street width, so if we're going to go too far down that, you'd want to have something in front of you that you could actually review with some data associated with it.
The reason I'm asking that is because of the, as it was alluded earlier, it's going to be lost of parking space. So you want to get an idea how many parking spaces would be lost before we go deeper into this discussion?
Preliminary discussions, my understanding was a hundred-foot area for dedicated left turn.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'm sorry to keep butting in on this particular item. This is a due process issue, you're acting in a quasi judicial role, which means this individual representing McDonald, the appellant, has filed an appeal. They're entitled to make a presentation now of their case about why the planning commission decision was wrong. If they're asking for a continuance, then my suggestion is, again, to take a straw vote in terms of whether or not you want to allow the continuance for additional evidence to come into the record. But right now, what I'm hearing is somewhat speculative. I have no idea what it is. It has not been filed with the city, and it is certainly not part of the, the evidence in front of you tonight as part of your package. So if this is something that you want to hear about, then certainly continue the matter. If not, then let's proceed with the hearing.
So you want to, you want to continue this, start here?
Yeah, I'd be willing to continue it.
What about you guys?
But I'd like to hear from the
Yeah, well, to give them a chance, it's okay. I'm fine.
So we're all going down the road to continue, that's all my
Very good. So under those circumstances, I would invite any member of the audience that cannot come back for the continued public hearing to give testimony tonight. And we will take that evidence, and then they would not be allowed to, again, testify and have a second bite at the apple at the continued public hearing, but certainly we can take that evidence tonight, and we'll record it for the record.
And we don't know how, if we're going to do this, continue to a date certain, it's going to be uncertain, I guess.
Certainly, we need a date certain, otherwise we will need to renotice the public hearing.
Okay, why don't we come up with a date first, so I can tell the applicant if that's good?
Mr. Mayor, just
Ask how many people are in the audience that are here for this item?
Yeah, how many people by raising a hand are in the audience for this item? And would you be able to come back at a later date if? Or you, you're welcome to give testimony tonight, or you can come back at a later date, but you don't, you'll get one bite at the apple? Yeah. Okay. There you go.
Mr. Mayor, if it might be, if it might be helpful.
You got a date?
Yeah, I was going to say, at least to give us a couple of weeks, you have your May 12th meeting, might be the sufficient time to review this and bring it back to you.
The next meeting?
Yeah, that gives us at least a couple
Well, let me ask the applicant. Can you get enough work done by, by the 12th of May?
It's tight, but
That's two weeks.
It's still April.
We should be able to do that. We have a meeting this Thursday with staff, so that should give us the information we need.
Another quick backup question here, staff. If for some reason, two days before, before the agenda, the agenda's got to come out seventy-two hours, so you got less than two weeks. Unless you're ready, but the agenda's going to come out with you on it in seventy-two hours before two weeks are up.
Our traffic engineer indicates that, that should be sufficient.
Okay, so you feel comfortable, okay, and is there a, a way out to postpone this if something goes wrong on their end?
Yes, you continue to that date certain, you could certainly
Continue to another date certain, okay.
But it sounds like the, those that are here can come back on another date.
I don't know how that might fit into the applicant's scheduling, but certainly as the council, you can do that.
That, that, no issue.
Okay, Troy.
Thank you, sir.
So that's enough, and I'll just give the audience one more stab at it.
All right, thank you, sir.
Okay. So anybody in the audience want to come and speak for or against this, or throw your two cents in on how you feel? Now's the time to do it. If not, May 12th, you can do it, do it then.
Do we have to open a public hearing? We're going to do this?
It's open.
It's open. Okay, we got one person. Okay.
Good evening.
Good evening. State your name and sign in.
It is, it is James Taylor, Jr. My father was James Taylor. He probably
Senior?
Senior, yeah, he's still singing, but it's okay, I'm crooning. So I am a business owner, but maybe privy to the situation. That little teeny speck in the corner down there with the left turn lane should probably go. You might be able to squeeze in there. Yeah, that guy right there. There's somehow three businesses were established there. The building was built back in the 50s, and no parking was provided. Interesting how that happened. However, there are two green curves at the thing. Now, we service the Sheriff's Department, City of Paramount, City of Bellflower. Anybody and everybody who seemingly needs keys, locks, security services. When we established the business back in 1977, we were good friends with the Omni Office Products that owned the Brothers Janitorial, what is now Brothers Janitorial. To make a quick note, we had parking established and, and the customers were happy. When Brothers Janitorial took over, no parking was provided, and signs were put up, and they threatened several times to tow away Bellflorians, not only who came to our establishment, but also to buy Brothers Janitorial stuff. Now, my consideration is with McDonald's Corporation coming in there, there's a big red line that runs right against our building. Well, right where that red line is, there's a ten-foot Edison easement as well. There's a pole in the back with a cable that runs and holds all the wiring going down Flora Vista Avenue. Recently, the pole had to be replaced, the wire had to be reconnected. So there is an Edison easement there. And there's seven parking stalls in my consideration that should have been public domain for the city of Bellflower, for two-hour parking, for the citizens of Bellflower who frequent that business as well as Brothers Janitorial. Now Aldi to the north has said, take a flying leap. Understandable, I get that. Parking has become an issue, and the lights have been atrocious if you're trying to get out of any one of these establishments, especially later in the day, trying to get out of Smart and Final across Death Row to get to the southbound lane, Death Row. You can make a right and go to the north exit, and maybe you'll clear a few cars coming out of that. The area is overrun by cars and traffic as it is. It would be nice to know that Bellflorians who are coming for a hamburger as well as maybe get their keys and their locks done, would not have to fight to try and park for ten minutes at a time to get their business done and maybe go get something to eat as well. Three businesses there, and it looks like zero parking, except that Edison easement that might need to be reconsidered before you draw your lines. That is the Edison easement there. Negotiations are on the table. We have been seeking retirement for a minute, and acquisition of our property is, is on the table. If that's something the McDonald's Corporation would need to consider to create that third lane in the middle and get your driveways going for northbound entrance as well. I'd say fifteen to twenty feet of the building sliced off. Technically, I thought the real cool thing would be to build above, establish the business on the bottom and apartments on the top, running completely down the red line, including our building, all the way back to establish residential, you know, residency. But whatever you guys decide, you decide. So thank you for hearing me, and call me if you need some extra space.
T-Bird, are you for or against the project?
I am truly a Sonic Burger man. I like Sonic
We're working on that too.
However, an occasional Big Mac is in my vision. I'm for the project as long as they're considerate of the Bellflower people, and and that's pretty much what I am for. So whatever works for the people works for me. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, not seeing any. I'll entertain a motion to continue, continue this with the public open, left open. Public.
So you made a motion?
I'll make the motion to
I'll second the motion.
To date certain, May 12th. And we got a motion on the floor by Councilmember Sanchez for a continuance to date May 12th with a second by Councilmember Coops. Call roll, please.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Santaynez?
Aye.
Councilmember Coops?
Aye.
Mayor Dutton?
Aye.
We need Wendy.
Thank you, T-Bird.
Bye, T-Bird. Okay, item 13A, Mr. Smoot.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. This item is consideration of possible action to authorize the city manager to execute an agreement with Southern California Edison for the acquisition of the city-owned streetlights within the Executive Track neighborhood, and I believe Mr. Grecki has a quick presentation for you.
Okay, Mr. Grecki, go ahead.
Uh, yeah, good evening, Honorable Mayor and councilmembers. Before you tonight, as Ryan just said, we have a consideration of possible action to authorize the city manager to execute an agreement with Southern California Edison for the acquisition of the city-owned streetlights within the Executive Track neighborhood. Just as a little background and context here, the Executive Track is north of Rosecrans. Can you go ahead and pull that up real quick, show a quick map of the area if you're not familiar with it? So it's north of Rosecrans, west of Bellflower Boulevard. It is highlighted as the yellow area there in that neighborhood. It's just the south of St. John Bosco. There are forty-seven parcels in there, and there are fifteen current non-working streetlights in that location as well. There's a little bit of history and context here, thanks to Councilmember Coops who educated me on how this, I could not find streetlight plans anywhere. And I was, I got real desperate and called Dan and just asked to pick his mind around here. But nonetheless, as it was explained to me, the area that you see north of Rosecrans back in 1950s, including a good portion of Thompson Park, all actually belonged to the city of Downey. And that track was built while that area was within the city of Downey, as was the streetlights. So that answered my questions of how the heck do I own these fifteen streetlights? And we've been responsible for them all these years. So that's how it came about. When that property, when the city boundaries changed, and that portion all the way up to Foster, to the, the top of the colored square there, was annexed to the city of Bellflower, that became our property, just like the streets and streetlights and all the other infrastructure that was in there. So as owners of these lights, we have constantly done as much maintenance as we can. We utilize our contractor, Santa Face Springs, that services our traffic signals. They're also familiar with traffic lights. They've always serviced those lights in there. On occasion, just due to age, we had problems here and there. About three years ago, it, it just started getting a lot more frequent, and there were a lot more issues that were popping up with the lights, most notably the age of the equipment itself. The transformer is what they refer to as an old oil can transformer. The parts for that transformer are, it's trying to find like a parts for a 1924. It's just, they're hard to find. If you do find them, you're lucky. If not, then you're kind of stuck with a problem. And that, that's where we've been heading down the past couple of years with this situation. So with that, Edison, on their own, decided to replace the transformer, which they did earlier this year. And we really thought that that was going to And we really thought that that was going to just be, uh, a, a smooth transition where we tied into the new transformer and we'd be okay. Uh, that has not been the case. Uh, we've had the lights go out on us again and they'll come back on intermittently for a couple of days and then they'll go out again. So, as I mentioned, the past few years, this has become more frequent, uh, up in that neighborhood. Um, there's, uh, probably some of the residents here, I would assume, uh, but we certainly hear from them, uh, all the time. You know, they're very concerned when, when they lose the, the streetlights, the neighborhood gets very dark. Um, especially in the wintertime, when it gets dark so early in the evening and stays dark all night long. It, it certainly presents a, uh, a, a safety concern for them and one which we understand. Uh, so we've started looking at some of our options. Um, we have two options, um, that we've worked through here. The first option, um, and the one that can happen the quickest and the easiest, uh, would be to, uh, sell the lights, the fifteen lights, to Southern California Edison. Edison has, uh, put a proposal together for us to do this, the, the timing of it. This is something that, um, just in, in theory can happen relatively in a, a couple of months. So the, the lights themselves, um, would be fixed and turned back on. The downside of that is when Edison does this, Edison does not underground, they do not re-underground. They will not consider putting new underground in to power these lights. In essence, what happens is the lights will have a power line that strings from light to light. It looks like a daisy chain and it's also the way every other streetlight is in that blue area. So the majority of the lights here in Bellflower and the local neighborhood streets, not the arterials, not some of the newer streets, many of the old streets, that's how the streetlights are done. There is a wire that goes from streetlight to streetlight to streetlight. Wong Su, can you kick a couple of slides forward and I'll just show a quick example? This is what a typical street looks like. This is Leahy, uh, about two houses south of the Executive Track. Uh, so right there, uh, you can see the, the power lines that run from, uh, the power line that runs from the streetlight pole to the streetlight pole, next one. Uh, this is just south of, uh, the Executive Track on Van Rutten. It's the same, the same situation here. You have the wire that runs pole to pole and we, I have one more. And then this is right here on Belfair and Dunrobin. So that is, and go, go back to the main map for me. So that in essence is the way all the lights are in the area that's highlighted in the blue. Um, so that is the situation out, the physical situation out there with the streetlights. So everybody has a light with the wire that goes light to light with the exception of the Executive Track and, and for good reason. Um, so the Executive Track was developed and, and this was a selling point back in the nineteen fifty's as part of that development, that this was going to be one of the first developments, the first neighborhoods that was going to have all the utilities undergrounded. And that certainly was the case. Um, the, the, the streetlights are in fact undergrounded there. So, with that and kind of taking a little, little bit of thought with it, with Edison, you know, as I mentioned, Edison is a, is a great option. It's, it's the quickest, it's the easiest. Those lights would then be merged into our existing inventory with Edison, which is nearly a little over eighty-four hundred streetlights citywide that Edison runs for us. Um, the downfall, uh, is the, the fact that there will now be a visible wire that goes light to light. That's, there's, I've, I've tried a million different ways to Edison to see if we can get them to underground, twenty-eight funds, twenty-B funds, and it's, it's just nothing that they're interested in doing. They don't want to invest the time and the infrastructure to do that. Uh, our second option, uh, that we looked at is i- if, if they're directed to do so, the public work staff and, and, uh, the rest of my staff, our engineering team, would look at possibly, uh, doing a feasibility study to design, uh, new undergrounding for this. This is one of the neighborhoods, we have a lot of them in, in town where there's no sidewalks. So ideally, I would not want to go ripping through everybody's front yard and messing up driveways and all that with conduit runs, we'd want to put it in the street. That's the easiest way to do it. However, there's a design element to that. We'd have to figure out, uh, and get a proposal from, uh, an engineering firm to design that system. We'd have to work closely with Edison to make sure that the system that we are designing is compatible with their system, what they have up there. I don't want to, if they're driving a Ford Ranger, I don't want to go put a Ford Pinto in there. I have to make sure it's compatible with, with, uh, their system. Uh, so there's a lot of legwork that we'd have to do, uh, with Edison to make sure that gets all, uh, vetted out. And then there's the actual construction of the project. You know, this is something, once designed and we put plans and specs together, we would put out for an RFP and we'd have a contractor, you know, contractors bid on, on doing this work. Ultimately, this is a lengthy process. Um, we're probably talking well into a year and a half, two years, all said and done, before you start seeing a shovel in the ground, trenching and so forth. And then there's the, the issue with the cost of the lights, the cost of a project like this. So, as I mentioned in the staff report, you know, preliminarily, this is gonna be somewhere in the four, four hundred, four hundred and fifty thousand dollar range, I would think right now, um, all told. Um, so, that's kind of what we're faced with if we're looking at doing this a, as a city project. Um, a little further with that is, you know, do you, do we program it as a CIP? Um, is there a direction to create a streetlight assessment district? Um, there's a lot of different ways that we can go about funding a project like this, but ultimately it would have to be something that, that the city council would direct staff to do. Streetlight assessment districts are, um, difficult. They, they're also a lengthy process. It's a formal ballot measure, uh, so it would have to be part of an election and it would only be open to those residents. Um, so there's, there's a lot of tasks at hand if, if we're going to go down the road of doing an assessment district as well. So, with all that said and done, uh, again, staff's recommendation to, to the council tonight is to work through an agreement with Edison, because again, it, uh, to staff, it appears to be the quickest and simplest process forward in, in getting those streetlights turned back on. Or consequently, um, the council can certainly direct me to start going down the road with a feasibility and design study for these streetlights there, knowing that there, there is significant time, uh, that would go by, uh, before, you know, we're, we're to the point where we're actually putting shovels in the ground. And the idea of pulling the wire and reusing the existing conduit, uh, is not feasible either. The conduit in the ground is extremely old. I think that's one of the reasons we have a lot of the tripping. There's, there's just, it shorts out, um, that's just the old, it's not copper, it's not EMT, plastic that's in the ground. It's, it's good old-fashioned rusted-out metal at this point. So, with that, um, the recommendation to the city council would be to authorize the city manager to execute an agreement with Southern California Edison for the acquisition of the city-owned streetlights in a form approved by the city attorney, or, uh, direct the city manager or his designee to develop a capital improvement project for the design and repair of the streetlights. Or three, alternatively, discuss and take other action related to the item. With that, I'm more than happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Lynn, good report, very thorough, but I do have a question. Scenario. Put you in the hot seat, I'm sorry, in advance.
You didn't call me up during the traffic, you didn't call me up during the traffic analysis, I was waiting for that one.
Well, you're not a traffic engineer. So the Executive Track, all the utilities are underground, is that correct?
Uh, no.
They have poles in the backyard?
There's a couple of them that have poles in the backyard.
A couple of them?
They do have drops. Um, Wong Su, can you go to the other? Uh, so, no, no, I'm sorry, that one right there. So, east of Leahy, uh, between Belfair and Crestbrook?
East of Leahy.
There's, the, the back of those properties do you have?
Oh, because they share with the other?
Yeah, that's, that's where the drops come from.
The poor people.
Yeah, so there, there are, yeah, there, there are wires in the air there.
The non-executive, okay, I've been politically corrected.
So, yeah, it, it's not free of wires. There, there are wires.
Like, between the blue and the yellow, there's wires. There's the telephone poles in the backyards.
Correct.
The rest of it, ninety percent of it is, or is it eighty percent, you would guess, just to spitball it, is underground. And that would be telephone too?
Yes, it's, it's, it's the comms too. Um,
Okay.
Yeah, I'd say probably, I'd say maybe a half, maybe twenty-five to thirty of those parcels.
Okay.
Don't have.
And then you, they're in the backyard anyway.
Yeah. The, the, everybody else has some.
That's really not my scenario. So, we know Alondra Boulevard is underground, all the way from Lakewood Boulevard or City Limit, all the way to Woodruff, I believe, underground electricity, I mean, not a lake, uh, Alondra, right? Underground, and it's not underground from Woodruff to the bridge. I think it just, is it? Uh,
On Alondra, Woodruff to the bridge?
No, I, I, from Woodruff to Lakewood, I know Alondra is underground.
Right. My store's underground.
Yeah, oh, your store's underground, okay. I'll go first then, okay. So anyways, so what I'm getting at, say our, our streetlights on Alondra went out and we can't fix them and we got to dig up the whole street. Now the scenario is, well now would we string, we got a perfectly good street with underground stuff, would we string wires from streetlight to streetlight in that scenario? Across Alondra, all the way city to city.
They're not our lights, they're Edison's lights.
Would they?
Edison, Edison would not. Edison would come out and fix their existing infrastructure. They would, they would sit and pull the wire through the conduit and put it back through.
That's my analogy, is like,
Correct.
It's underground already, you kind of keep it underground. That's just where I'm thinking.
Nope.
That's it, but, thank you. Go ahead, Wendy.
So is there a reason that Edison wouldn't keep these underground?
I think Edison's deal here is to make it as easy for them to maintain, because ultimately they are responsible for the, for the maintenance of these as well. Um, Edison would have to go and acquire easements through either the street or private property, uh, because they, they don't, because we own those lights. There's no Edison easements in there right now specific to those lights. So there's, there's the administrative end of them having to create an easement, um, and then actually doing the work itself. So it's, I think when, when they have the two options in front of them, they're, they're going to go with the quickest and easiest. And that's why they tend to offer it up on very small, um, acquisitions like this. Um, you know, they'll come in and say, "We're more than happy to take this over and incorporate it, but we're going to put the wire, the, the wire's going to be above ground." That's, that's their only hiccup with it.
And Mr., oh, sorry.
Well, I mean, I'm obviously new, so is there a reason or anywhere in thought process that the rest of our city wouldn't go underground with their wiring and stuff? And obviously not overnight or whatever, but in, in a timeframe?
I think I can address that a little bit. Um, usually when these undergrounds happen, they happen in one of two ways. First of all, when a development happens, in fact, there's other areas of the city where development has happened and the developer, when they're building out that, you know, tract of homes, would build those lights underground and then they get transferred to Edison for the operations and maintenance going forward in time in Edison main stations over the, you know, subsequent course of history. Um, the second way is, uh, what's called Rule, Rule Twenty-A Funds, that where cities go through and do this. It's basically a, a assessment that's part of an electricity bill that, uh, gets tacked on that allows public agencies to then go forward and do this undergrounding over time. These projects generally are very large-scale and very expensive and usually exceed the amount of that assessment. So sometimes cities would borrow against future assessments in order to complete a project. For instance, hypothetically, let's say you had a ten-million-dollar project and you had a million dollars sitting in that fund. You'd borrow out the next X number of years of your assessment in order to complete that small-scale project, right? Um, that's of course hypothetical. Those, that Rule Twenty-A, to my knowledge at least, Lynn, doesn't exist anymore. Um, so that ongoing pool of funds in order to do these kinds of projects isn't necessarily there like it used to be. Um, and even then, when you do these types of projects on a large scale, they get very, very expensive for all the reasons that Lynn identified. So usually that's one of the two ways when undergrounding happens. It either happens at the beginning when, you know, you're going from bare dirt to development and the developer takes on the cost of doing that, or the public agency comes in and does it after the fact through those Rule Twenty-A Funds, which simply don't exist anymore.
Is currently, um, when the lights are out, like you said, fifteen are out at a time or whatever? How are we fixing them currently?
Um, well, we send, we've had both Santa Face Springs go out and try to diagnose the problem as well as Edison. Edison will come in there and try to get them and they'll, they'll come back on. They'll be on for a handful of days and then inevitably, one or two go out or they'll all go out again. And, and that's usually when we know, because our phone starts ringing and, and we have a lot of the, a lot of the homeowners up in that area, certainly, uh, and to their credit too. I mean, they're, they, they call us every time. I mean, they're, they live there, they're dealing with it on a, on a daily basis. Um, and certainly we, we do everything we can. We're just limited because the, the infrastructure itself is, is so old. And there's just not a, there's not an op, there's not a lot of options for us at this point.
Is there any difference in Edison lights and what's currently there in brightness or anything?
Um, well, I mean, the lights that are up there, the, are, they're, they're the, you know, the high sodium vapor, the orange glowing lights. Um, Edison, when they take these over, or, uh, citywide in Bellflower, about four years ago, they went through and converted everything to LEDs. So a lot of their streetheads are converted to LEDs. That would be the same case here. So they would come in and they would remove the, the old HSV bulbs and they would put the standard LED streetlights in, like, uh, like, like you have right there on Van Rutten in the, the, the first half of Leahy and everywhere else in that neighborhood.
Those are my questions, I'd like, I'll wait to hear from the residents.
You mind if I say one more thing, because there's sodium lights on all those? They're not LEDs?
Uh, no, the ones, I believe the ones up in Belfair, they did not get converted.
They didn't get converted when we did the whole city?
Because they weren't, they weren't Edison-owned. That was Edison's program to convert those.
Edison's program, oh, we only did Edison's, huh?
Yeah, we didn't do, we didn't do the city-owned lights.
Wouldn't that help if they were converted to AD? Because we all know they draws way less amperage, the sodium versus an LED.
We've walked that scenario with Edison. We literally went out in March, February or March, in Santa Face Springs. They went through every bulb and verified all the wattage, because when they put the new transformer in, we had another.
Well, no, what I'm saying is you got infrastructure that's failing, like, I mean, it must be the undergrounding copper. And if it's the, the load on that wire underground, if you had an LED that drew less amperage, maybe we can make it go a little longer, I don't know, I'm just going to work or not. I don't know, I'm not the electric guy. But I do know a fact that LEDs draw way less current, like, ten, you know, ninety percent less.
Yeah, I, I, I don't know if that would solve the problem. If we went out and switched all the heads out.
I'm just surprised that we, yeah, that, that wasn't, yeah, okay. That's just some, that's what I wanted to put out there.
That's all I have.
Any other question, Vicker? Did you have one to go?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, I have some questions, uh, related to the assessment district. I'm trying to understand that a little bit more. So, um, Sir, uh, Grecky, you said, uh, it would have to go on a ballot. So the earliest that we would have, if it were to go, if we were to go this route, the earliest decision would be made in November of twenty twenty-six?
I'm going to ask the city attorney to.
That isn't something that we'd have to throw onto a county-wide ballot. Obviously, this is a small section, we would probably run that internally, so we could do that whenever needed. But it would be, just like any other ballot, it would have to be a formal vote of all of the residents.
Of the residents in that, in our, in, okay.
It wouldn't be that fifty, the, the mail the letter and fifty plus one, no?
It's not a Prop Two Eighteen notice, it would have to be a formal vote of those, of all those residents.
Okay, and then, um, what would the reimbursement period look like if, if we were to do that method and the voters were to vote to go that route?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, sorry, I was conferring with my colleague. What was your question?
I- i- if we were to take the assessment district route. I, i- if we were to take the Assessment District route, what does the reimbursement period look like?
In terms of how long it would take to read?
In terms of how long the, yeah, the reimbursement would take.
So to answer that question, I have to.
I'm assuming the city would front the funds and then.
Yeah, so I, I, in order to answer that question, I have to explain a little bit about the procedure for creating the Assessment District. So one of the first steps that one takes is, uh, an engineer's report is created in order to determine what the assessment is. And, and the calculations for that, I'm not an engineer, but I play one on TV. Uh, the, the, the calculation for that is basically you take the O and M for the particular, uh, project, including capital, initial capital costs. And then the O and M costs, and then you calculate the number of parcels, how they're specially benefited. There may not be a uniform cost for all the assessments, uh, and then that assessment is gone, is sent out to the proposed Assessment District for all of the voters in that, or all the affected property owners to vote on those assessments. So really, it's a factual question that you're asking, because if it's a twenty million dollar project and you only have ten parcels, obviously, it's gonna take longer than any of twenty-five parcels or fifty parcels. So it's, I'm gonna use the dreaded phrase.
So in layman's terms, is it five years, ten years?
I'm going to use the dreaded phrase of, it depends.
It depends.
Person, the best answer to that would be the, whichever engineer prepares the study initially in order for us to understand what the assessments would, were going to be. But typically, like in a typical bond situation, you're talking about thirty-year period in order to repay the amounts based upon the cost.
Got it, okay.
And if that's the case, you wouldn't just do the undergrounding, you might as well place this, replace the stanchions, the updated stanchions, you know?
And you'd, you'd also have, um, you'd go through that process annually to, to assess those costs. So if those operations and maintenance costs were.
Oh, it would be an ongoing.
Correct. You'd be going through that, that engineer's estimate on an annual basis.
Okay. All right, um, could you flip it to the next slide, please? The following one, the next one? So are these the type of poles that are there now, or?
Concrete?
Uh, no, actually, the, the poles that are, I, I believe the poles in the executive track are, a lot of them are the marble lights. Which, you know, the concrete.
Concrete.
Looking ones, yeah. I think that one right there.
That's a fluted, that's a great name.
Yeah, I think that one's actually a, a metal one.
Fluted iron.
Yeah, from what I can see from the picture.
But, but more or less, they would look like this, right? So they, would the same ones stay, stay, and then they would just connect from the top? Or would they get new ones?
Oh, no, I think they're just looking to change the, the cobra head.
The cobra, the top?
Yeah, the mast arm in the, in the fixture.
Okay.
Yeah. The, the marble lights themselves, I would have to double-check with Edison to see if they would, if the wire would run from the pole or the light fixture itself.
Oh, okay.
There's fifteen of them, like you said, and they're all the same. I looked at them today.
Yeah. So then, yeah, then they're all.
Well, the reason why I bring it up is because to me, this looks nice.
No, it's pretty clean, but we're gonna find out how bad, we're gonna list the, the, the residents there, if that wire bothers them. Find out how important that is.
Yeah, yeah, I think that's what we need to do.
You know? And I think one part you didn't explain, and I guess we should know this, if the Edison company were to do what they're suggesting, it happens quickly and it's free of charge.
Yeah. Yes. Thank you.
And we pay a lease payment on it, right? A lease, we, you know, we, we get a fee, electricity fee.
Yeah, they, they just get added into our existing inventory.
We're paying it right now.
Yeah, we're already paying for eighty-four hundred lights in.
Now you got eighty-four hundred and forty-eight.
Yeah, eighty-four hundred and fourteen or fifteen.
Mayor Pro Tim?
Uh, yeah, thank you, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Gurekki, for your presentation. I learned a lot of, from the history of Downey and Bellflower reading this staff report today. Um, couple of questions. So, are there's more than forty homes? Exactly how many homes are in the executive track?
I believe forty-seven. That's what I have in the.
Forty-seven homes, okay. All right, um, and I, I think the, the Rule 28 was used for, just on the side, um, to underground utilities on Artesia a while back, about ten years ago, something like that.
Um, with that, with, with the development.
Right.
Yeah.
Combination of funding and so on and so forth.
We use some of the 28 funds, but I know he's laughing, because they're still not all underground.
It's not done, Sonny. They started in two thousand and ten.
It's just, I'm just trying to illustrate how much, how much, how long it will take to, if we are to underground all utilities in Bellflower. It's gonna be a, maybe two, two generations, maybe longer than that. Anyway, um, is there, just confirm for me, um, is there any other area in the city that's owned, the lights are owned by the city?
Yeah, we, the, the city actually owns a little over two hundred individual lights. Most, most, most of what you see down.
Areas like, areas like this, where it's parcel to parcel.
Uh, in neighborhoods, there, there's, uh...
Or is, or is the last one?
Not the last one. This, I think this perhaps might be the only one. The, the, so the majority of the streetlights that we own are in the old downtown, our, our downtown area. So those streetlights we own, we've always owned those, um, as well as the, the pedestrian lights in there. So in, in total, there's about two hundred and twenty lights within the Bellflower city limits that we own. Uh, the rest are owned by Edison.
Edison, oh, I see, okay. But in terms of similar, similar situation as the executive track, there's nothing that exists in Bellflower anymore?
Noth- nothing like this.
Okay. Um, in, in terms of the Assessment District, um, with regards to your, um, option number two, uh, develop a capital improvement plan, so that will be in relation to Assessment District, correct?
Correct.
If the resident choose, well, if you choose option number one, basically, it's gonna be done by Edison right away at the cost of one dollar, and there's nothing more to be done by the residents. They won't be paying for any utilities, improvements, maintenance, so on and so forth.
Yeah, no, that, that's all incorporated into the, in, into the city's costs.
So the city will pay for it, uh, for an ongoing basis. Um, if we were to go to number two, I'd like to hear, uh, input first from the residents. Because before we spend money on this, if they're gonna go for an Assessment District, why even spend money for a consultant to do the study?
Oh, yeah.
So I would, I would recommend for the rest to kind of weigh in. If they are not here, um, would it be acceptable to do an informal ser, a formal survey?
Ab- absolutely.
Just to the forty-seven, forty-seven residents, are you in favor of a district or not? Before we spend another dollar towards a study, which they may reject in the first place later on, anyway?
We can certainly do that, yes, absolutely.
All right, thank you.
Or send, if there's not enough.
Right.
Sampling tonight, we can send letters.
Exactly, exactly. So at least we have some kind of commitment if they're gonna go along with the, with the Assessment District.
Before we hear from any public, the streetlights now are non-functional, or they just never know when they're gonna work?
I think they're off right now.
And they've been off for how long, would you guess? We can hear from the residents.
Yeah.
Months, okay. So right now, we're at the time, they're gonna be dark until we make a decision and see how long. Okay, got it. All right, let's hear from the audience. Anybody wishing to speak on this item? Now's your time. Just state your name for the record.
Do we have to open a public hearing or no?
It's not a public hearing, it's, it had a consideration, yeah. Mr. Cook, make sure you write your name down there and your residence, or the city clerk to get it in the record.
Okay. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. Uh, my name's Rick Cook. I live in the executive track, as most of you know. Uh, I actually live on Cabell Avenue there. Uh, I hate above-ground electrical lines, okay? I hate them.
What do you really think?
Yeah, I was, I was so proud of my city when they put those, uh, on Alondra Boulevard. It's been, what, thirty-three years?
Like eighty-one or two, or they put that in Londra?
I think it was the early nineties, but yeah.
Was it? Okay.
Yeah, well, I was running the Taco Bell there, and I remember when it happened, we had to shut down for a day, and I was glad to do it. Because it made Alondra so much better looking.
It does.
Every night when I say my prayers, I say, dear Lord, pre, please put the electrical lines along Woodruff Avenue underground, okay? I don't, but, uh.
I don't know what God you're praying to.
Do I need to change it?
Yeah.
But I, you know, I, I drive Woodruff of- often, if you look at the electrical lines that are on the west side of the street, it's just so ugly. And, uh, and the electrical lines that run behind our, our houses are, are, are pitifully ugly, too. And I just never, and I, I, once they did that, Alondra.
Is that you, Rick, right here?
I'm sorry?
Is that you?
Uh, I think I'm up, up one.
Right here?
Right there, yeah.
So do you have something in the backyard like we talked about?
Yeah, where that red line is, there's electrical lines that run.
How do you, how do you sleep with that?
Well, I, I don't like it, okay? It's, I mean, I'm in my backyard, you look at it, it's ugly.
So you share a pole with the poor people? Oh, non-executive people.
Yes, with the blue collar.
Yeah, here we go.
Okay. But one aspect of our community that is not readily apparent, and I'm sure this wasn't planned for, but if you notice, the streets make a, a loop there, which is, you know, off the main street, it's rather, um, quiet and secure. And many of the residents from the surrounding areas will walk over to our neighborhood and use that to walk.
The circle of that, yeah?
Yeah, yeah, they really like it. So any projects you do don't benefit just us. They benefit everybody in our, in our neighborhood there. Um, I, I, Len made a great present, presentation. Um, for, speaking for myself, I would pay more money to not have wires running from, from, from light post to light post, and.
You'd tax yourself, okay.
I, I, yes, I will, I will tax myself.
What would, what would be your guess about the neighborhood?
I was objecting.
Only your half.
I, you know, I, 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 I would campaign for it in my neighborhood, okay?
Okay.
You know, I, I think, I, I think a lot of them would. I'm sure a few of them would be against it, okay? But I would, I would, I would love to see it, stay the way it is.
You can't please everybody, I know that. Thank you, Mr. Cook. Good evening.
Good evening. My name's Sarah Miller. So I, I'm repris, I, I live on Belfair Street. I have, uh, my mom and dad live on Leahy. I've been there my whole life. My sister lives on Leahy. My, um, adopted grandparents live right next door, and they were the original owners. And we take so much pride in, in our little area. It, it means the world to us that, like, just, it, it means so much to us, our, our specific area. As you can tell, we have so many people here that are here because of this. And I just think, what does it tell my boys if we were to take something like, you know, this, this area has under, underground electrical? And now we're gonna put it above because it's, it's gonna be a little bit too difficult for Edison, or a little bit too costly for Bellflower? Like, we're going backwards. I, I just, I, I don't think that teaches my kids anything. And so I did prepare a speech. Um, I'm just gonna say it real quick.
Go right ahead.
Um, I'm here today because I care deeply about the beauty, progress, and future of our city. We currently have underground electrical for our streetlights, a system that enhances our safety, our property values, and most importantly, the character and pride of our, um, of our community. Moving backwards to above-ground wiring not only disrupts the clean and charming look of our neighborhoods, but it also undermines the work we've put in for decades to beautify and modernize our area. Above-ground wiring increases visual clutter. It creates more maintenance risks and frankly sends the wrong message about the direction we are heading as a city. So we deserve a city that moves forward, not backwards. So I, I.
What would, what, what would you say, one of the ideas is whatever we decide here, and if we decide to do the expensive way, and put in a landscape, landscaping, or lighting district in or whatever, do you, your, your family, all, I think there's five parcels you mentioned.
Yeah, yeah, there's a lot of that.
You think they would all vote to tax themselves to pay for this over the next ten or twenty years?
I, I can't speak on that right now. I.
What do you feel?
Well, how much are we talking here?
We don't know, it's an unknown. It's not a.
Let's be realistic here. We've got a four hundred thousand dollar potential bill, right?
Right.
It's ten thousand dollars each.
No, I, I don't think we, no, we, we pay so much.
Over, over twenty years.
Yeah, but that, you can drive it up over your bills the way you want, but know that this is a ten thousand, at least.
Well, what would you do if on Bellflower Boulevard, the lights, you know, something happened on Bellflower Boulevard that, you know?
It was Alondra that I said, if something went out.
But didn't you say also Bellflower Boulevard, like the downtown, um, our city owns Bellflower? So if those were to go bad, were we gonna just start to stream above lights from pole to pole in that area? What would that show the citizens?
We would dig the sidewalk up and.
And, and fix that, right?
Correct.
You fix it. So people spent a lot of money for these homes back in the day. My original neighbor, she, they spent everything they had to buy that home and be in that little neighborhood. And it would destroy her to see us going backwards. Um, and yeah, so, any other questions I can answer as a resident?
Just be aware, it could be a ten thousand dollar per parcel.
And Mr. Mayor, we should be clear.
Okay.
That, that cost the staff included in the staff report is the capital investment cost. There's also the question of the ongoing operations and maintenance. Typically, when these things are done, as they are, have been done in other areas of the city that are undergrounded, the developer takes.
Thank you, Sarah.
Investment and then.
Hi, City Council, Mayor. Um, my name is Urain Cook.
Just write your name next to it, Rex.
Okay, just right there.
You can save some ink that way.
Um, I live on Cabell, as he said. And I want, I just want you to know, one of the reasons we bought our house in that area was because it had the underground wiring. You know, that was an attractive feature to us. And, you know, it is a very, very nice neighborhood, and like Sarah said, we do not want to go backwards. I mean, of course, I do not want to be assessed. I pay a tremendous amount of money to Edison already. But, um, you know, this is important, and I do feel like it would be a definitely, you know, going in the wrong direction. I mean, we should be looking to, you know, to the future where all this stuff is underground. I know it's expensive, but, you know, uh, somebody told me, that's what cities do.
Well, I think we're looking at this as.
I did mention to Rick, as we were talking there, um, it's, has solar lights been discussed at all in this provision? I don't know if that would be anything, you know, could you put some kind of nice fixture that, you know, it's just an idea that came to my mind because.
It's been talked about, but I don't think researched.
Because it's so dark, I've had to buy all kinds of solar lights for my front yard, just to bring.
Is it pretty?
Just to bring.
Made it prettier, didn't it?
Well, it is, but you know, it's, it is very dark in the neighborhood now, so it is kind of a, it's not as a friendly atmosphere to walk. I always call it the island, around the island, but, um, you know. Yes, a lot more theft, that's true.
Thank you, Urain. Good evening.
Hi, how are you?
Okay.
My name's Lynne Akos. I live on the corner of Cabell and Belfair. Um, like she just talked about, I know of two, um, attempted thefts of vehicles or break-ins in the last month. One, um, one of our neighbors stopped. They were looking at my house, at my cars, uh, which causes me concern. Um, but my question is, if we do the assessment, you're talking years before we have lights?
No, no.
Two years, was it?
Yeah, two, at least two years.
Yeah, it's, it's a year and a half to two years, what was public work stated, from now to get something done. It's, it's gotta be designed. It's like building a house almost. You gotta put it out to bid, get to the best price.
Okay, but that's really not acceptable for us, so I understand the above, the, the other one going above. But, okay, so I'm on the corner of Belfair and Cabell there. Right now, okay, uh, point where my driveway is there. Who has it, Dan? Do you have it?
Yeah, here.
Okay, I have a pole right there. Then point to where the, on the Cabell side where you see that sidewalk.
Let's see here.
Well, next to my neighbor's house.
All right, so your son's here.
Yeah, but across, directly across from where you are, to the right. Okay, come down a little. Okay, I have a pole there. If they, if they did wires, would the wire, would they have to put a new pole on the corner, or how are they?
No.
They use the existing one.
Okay, I know, but so, but right now, there's no wires.
Oh, I had to string the wire.
Yeah, they, they're just gonna string a wire from pole to pole to pole.
Okay, so how are they gonna get it around the corner? Wires don't.
It'd go over your house.
Or would it go over my house?
No, it would not.
No, it wouldn't go to the house. No, pole to pole to pole from whatever pole, and they might go the other way too.
It would go from my pole that.
They're not gonna connect everyone, they might go Y out or branch out.
Yeah, 'cause I really, I have a.
I have no idea.
Pointed roof, and they would have to really.
No, it's not going over your house. That's illegal, you can't run wires over.
Okay, good.
Over someone's property.
Okay. Well, that's what I said, I would really hate to have a pole on the corner. I wouldn't want that. Okay, um, so my concern is the time issue.
Well, two months is for Edison to do with the wires.
I know.
And you heard, one and a half to two years of doing it the right way, that that's impossible, there's no other way to do it faster.
I know, I know. Well, is it possible to get increased police presence in our neighborhood until we get lights? Because.
There's always that, you know.
I mean, I mean, yeah, it's dark.
The problem is, we want more cars, but the sheriff can't give them to us.
Yeah.
There's a shortage.
Okay.
So it's really, it's, it's a society, this is a society that we, this, today's age.
Yeah.
It's the way it is. It's, it's not just your neighborhood that gets broke into, it's citywide.
No, I know, but.
It's too much nonsense out there from Sacramento.
But now that it's so dark, it's really dark. You should drive through there at night.
No, I believe ya.
It's dark.
I believe you, Lynne.
Okay, that's all I have to say.
So.
Can I, can I make a request though? Is there a way to ask Public Safety to have Southwest Patrol or any, anyone at the mo, like currently start, um, coming around there a little more with those lights all out?
They're at Thompson Park, I don't know how many times a night they can cruise by the executive track.
Brian, is there a way to have, um, Southwest Patrol do some extra patrols through their, their neighborhoods through the nights with their lights not working? I mean, in general anyways, but especially.
Uh, yes, absolutely positive. Uh, I know when we, when Mr. Grecky first notified me, this, this outage was a few months ago, I believe, we asked Southwest to go through there. We can re-up that again, have them go back through there, yes.
Yeah, have them continue to go through, I guess.
Correct. Especially since it sounds like maybe someone in an elongated time period.
Well, they're already at Thompson Park, they can just cruise by there to the next park when they're always making the rounds.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, done, Lynne. Well, I'm glad you do, 'cause I, I hope I have an answer.
My name is Kathy B. Hampton, and I live in the non-executive, what'd you call us? The poor people.
Knew that was gonna bite me.
I'm on Dunrobin here.
Non-executive.
Yeah, but I'm still on Dunrobin. Are you talking about all of Dunrobin too, that area in there, from Dunrobin to?
No, just the yellow area.
Yeah, we almost bought there, my husband did a long time ago, so, okay, thank you.
Why I said, um, I, you know, the poor area, because I lived on Belfair Street.
Oh, okay.
Guess what side? The poor area.
The poor area, okay.
I was in the, I actually was raised there, Belfair Street.
Thank you.
It was great to go up here during Christmas time, because we were poor, we didn't have Christmas decorations like that track did.
Thank you.
Okay.
Mayor and City Council member Cheryl Williams. Can you clarify, I'm really confused what the options are. I know Edison can put up the lamp, the poles with the horrible wires, or they can have an assessment district, which I think if they wanna stay underground, that would be on their backs. Or is the city financing, planning to finance any of this? Because I really.
The decisions are Edison will do it for free and have it done in 60 days. That's option, and option two is we pay to dig up the streets, design it, and re-conduit and run new copper to every existing poles there, probably change out the heads to LED, who knows? But that has to be designed, there's no total cost, there's an estimate of $400,000 at this time, that. You know how construction is, it's always more than that. That's the option, but on, a parallel item is, put, if we put a lighting assessment tax for that executive track, they vote to do it, there's a chance that we would do this if that goes through, 'cause we have a chance reversing, reimbursing the city's cost over decades.
Yeah, I understand assessments.
As, as a body up here, we always have to weigh in the city's money of spending money in this area and not any other area for this reason. So we're, we're cognizant of every neighborhood in this town, other than the executive track, and we have to weigh that too. That's, we haven't talked about it tonight, but that's in every one of our heads, I'm sure, of what we do here.
We gotta do it everywhere.
You know, we gotta be, be considerate to everybody else. Why are we doing this? Justify ourselves.
I grew up in Bellflower, and I will honestly say, I didn't know we had an executive track.
You didn't.
And I have friends that live over by there, but, but I really would resent.
With no executives.
But I really would resent my tax money, and I know my neighbors would going, just so this little pocket of people. I understand they need streetlights. I understand wires are ugly, we all agree with that. But I don't want my tax dollars being spent so they can keep their stuff. If Edison put it down, let Edison fix it, I mean.
If it's underground.
The assessment district, yes.
Yeah, just.
A third alternative is the city pays for it. That means my tax dollars is paying.
Well, that assessment district, we would do, we talked about just doing the yellow. We can do a separate area.
Right, right, yeah. On my job, we've dealt with a lot of assessment districts.
But what do I do when the lady from Dunrobin says, hey, they got it, why can't I have underground?
Exactly.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I have a friend that lives on Dunrobin in the poor area.
And so you paid for them, why don't you can't pay for mine, you know?
Yeah, but, but, I mean, you could, but then we'd be in debt for the rest of our millennia. So, anyway, I just wanted to make sure I was understanding, and I did. Thank you.
Thank you, Cheryl. Next? Well, good morning, or afternoon to me, whatever, geez, I'm sorry about that. It's been a long day for me.
Maybe mine in your bedtime, huh?
Yeah.
My name is Doug Donovan, and yes, I live in this area. I, I would like to discuss item three, where you have, you know, 13A, and you have expounded on A and B, where you can go overhead, or where you can, uh, replace the entire infrastructure. Three years ago, a few of us met with some of you at, um, Thompson Park about the same issue. And I think you guys piggyback off a contract with Santa Fe Springs for your service, I'm not sure if that's the right words, but I think that's how it is.
Subcontract, yeah.
And, um, I'm not so sure that, um, the entire infrastructure is bad. I haven't seen anything, not that I've asked to see it, but I've saw no one in our neighborhood actually lift any of the yard boxes that are in our yards to really determine whether some of the wiring is good or not. And the reason I say that is that when, um, the contractor from Santa Fe Springs comes to Leahy, where the transformer from Edison, where the tie-in is to the city-owned lights, the, the lights work, all except, I'll say one, there's one, that's a, that's a separate issue, probably an individual light issue. But if they all work, then there's at least something working in that wiring that's in the ground. You can't not tell me that it, yes, it may be obsolete, it was put in in what, 58 the track was built, or something like that? And, um, I've been there since 83, and they worked until, we've had this issue, we met in the park, and within a day or two of your contractor being there, then they worked for a year or so, and then just recently, we've had them down a couple of times. But I disagree slightly, they don't one or two work, they either all work or they don't work. Uh, except for, like I say, one that's not working on its own, that's a whole separate issue.
Right, could be a bulb.
So I, I would like to expound on what the mayor said about, I, I've not seen anything, and maybe you have all this information here, I apologize, I don't know your name, but you hear me, right?
Yeah.
I wasn't sure, um, 'cause it's getting late, you know, I wasn't sure.
Yeah, address, address, I mean.
I agree with you that the, uh, the look at, uh, some type of new lighting system as far as energy use on the individual lights, we can usually get more looms for less wattage. And if that's the case, and if the infrastructure wiring is semi-all right, then we may be able to talk about item three, an alternate discussion. Save a lot of money, save a lot of time, um, and maybe your Santa Fe Springs contractor is capable of that, maybe your engineer, engineers are capable. But I would like to, you know, propose that. And then I know there's a lot of talk about city money, but we also, years ago, voted to have a city tax, and the primary use of that city tax was for safety. It first put us a sheriff substation on Bellflower Boulevard, it got us a few more sheriffs, but this is also a safety issue. And yes, I understand what stringing lights, stringing the wire looks like. It looks like crap. Those pictures don't really do it justice, because that wire fades into a couple of streets west of us, I have some friends that live there, and they, they have a lot of trees. And that wire fades into them trees as it crisscrosses across the street. I guess just because of our area being old, over the last five, six years, we lost all of our, the city is, and rightly so, has had to remove all of our trees, 'cause they got so big, they were splitting and falling and whatever. So, anyway, that's, that's my piece.
Thank you. Anyone else? No.
Good evening. Um, my name's Karen Whitmus. I live in this neighborhood, I live on Belfair, right about in the middle there, in the elitist neighborhood you're trying to make us out to be. You know, we bought our homes, um, spent a lot of money, a lot more than a lot of other people did in the, in the areas and stuff at the time, uh, it was kinda rough, but, um, you know, we bought it with it looking a certain way, and we want it to stay the way it's supposed to look, the way we bought our property, just the same as you guys do. You don't want your wires taken down or stuff changing for you guys any more than we do, okay? And to sit here and say, well, geez, I, you know, there's only 47 houses, why should they get special treatment or whatever? Because that's the way we bought it. That's the way it was built here by Bellflower, that's the way the city council or whoever approved it to be built. It was built for, it called an executive track, because who lived there? City council people. People, mayors and stuff like that, they all lived in that neighborhood. And they've passed away, moved on, whatever they've done, and we've moved in, but that doesn't make us an elitist group that doesn't need to be treated fairly. We pay taxes too. And.
I'm sorry, but what makes you think we're not treating you fairly?
Because the, the comments that are being made, this lady here, over here, I don't think that my, you know, taxes should go towards that neighborhood, you know? And, and things, things that you guys have been saying.
This is just something that we weigh in.
Right.
And if we don't think the whole city, there's, we just put it on the table, we're full disclosure, I'm sorry if I offended you, I apologize. But we're not treating your track, we're not treating your track any different.
When you bought your house, you looked at the whole neighborhood, and the way it looked, that's what we did. We like it the way it is. We have wires that run across, we have a pool, ours is that one with the pool right there in the center. And we have wires going across right over top of our pool. As if that's not scary enough, now we're gonna have them in the front too. And why can't we use some solar lighting? Why can't we get into the 21st century?
Well, that's what we're here to discuss.
Right, and we brought it up, that meeting we had a long time ago. And here we are, what, three years later, Doug? Three years since that meeting, and this was all discussed at that time, and at that time, we were told.
We weren't on that meeting. I think tonight is just, we have this Edison option, we're just deciding on this, and if we're gonna go another way.
We were told at that time that he was going to present it to you guys at that time, and he didn't get, and here we are. And we do have one faulty light, and we know it, because it flickers and stuff when we got the lights working. But let's blame Edison, because when their transformer went out around Thanksgiving, Christmas time, that's when all of our problems really started happening. And we've had the people from Pico, wherever that is, come out, and they, they, they never even do anything. We got people that sit at home all day long, and they see them drive up in their little trucks, and they get out, and they just got the attitude that, you know, what you've got there is old, and it needs to be replaced. Maybe it doesn't, maybe it can just be fixed. I just don't think we're pushing hard enough to do the fix. I think that we should spend a little bit more time on that, instead of working so hard to do this big project and have Edison come in and run wires all over the place. It's scary. And how many years ago was it when we had that water spout that came behind us, the street behind us, came right down our street, knocked down trees that were bigger than I can put my arms around? That's the last thing we need, is all those wires to come flying and landing all over the place. So I'm sorry, I'm, it's hard to watch our neighborhood possibly get destroyed. And I think if you had the opportunity in your neighborhoods to have the wires underground, I think you'd be happier with it also. I'll put my name down. Sorry.
Next?
Darlene Palacios. Hi, everybody.
Hello.
There was another discussion, I don't know what it was about, but we discussed solar, and it seems to me, what I hear all the time is solar is never an option here. And I don't know why, but that's what's been presented to me. Every time we have something, and we say, okay, can we consider solar? It's a no. Do we know why?
I don't know what you're talking about, I'm sorry.
I don't know, we talked about solar for some.
Not we, not me and you.
Yeah, yeah, here, in this.
In this body?
In, uh, at one of the council meetings previously, when I was coming to get the flashing lights on my street. It come up, and they're always, I think it was somebody else's story, but it's, it seems like solar is never an option. Why?
You got solar. The flashing lights are solar, aren't they?
Yes.
Okay, then we, we endorse that.
But what they said, yes, thank you so much. Might have been the battle. How come we can't have more solar around our city?
Well, we've never said that we didn't want it, that's for sure.
Yeah.
But it has to be used in the proper place, and it worked out in your situation.
Yeah, it worked out for me after a year. It was a battle, a year-long battle.
Yes, I understand that.
It was a long battle.
Are we gonna talk about sol, solar, or talk about battle?
You wanna talk about the crosswalk?
The question is still the same. The question is still the same. Why can't, why do we not consider solar around our city for all of?
We're talking, right now, we're talking about the executive track. If there's anything you wanna add with the executive track, or anything with Edison, wiring those lights or alternatives, you're welcome to talk about that.
I think we should consider an alternative of solar.
Okay.
For that area, for the executive area.
Thank you very much. You have anything else to add?
No.
Okay.
Mayor, if I can add real quick. Um, kinda piggyback on, uh, what a couple of the residents had mentioned earlier. So a couple of years ago, we did hold a community meeting, uh, over at Thompson Park. We invited, uh, all, we sent invitations out to all the neighborhoods there. We had about five or six residents that showed up and discussed. One of the items that was discussed was the fact of looking at solar, uh, lighting to use. So from that, what we've, what we have done is we have tested different solar heads. Uh, we have one currently right behind Mr. Cook's property, uh, down behind the.
You mean Rick Cook?
Yes. Yes. We, well, we have, we have a light in the parking lot back there.
His property in, in the executive track?
No.
On Bellflower Boulevard.
A business, on the business property, commercial property.
Down, down behind, on Bellflower Boulevard, down, down behind Dunkin' Donuts.
You were wondering too, huh?
Yeah. We, we also installed one over at the Empower lot too. So, when we've installed these and we looked at them, they, they certainly do not give off anywhere near the same light that you would see from a normal street light.
Gotcha.
So, they haven't necessarily been one of the, one of our top picks to do. We can certainly go back and look at taking some of these lights. And I would actually invite the residents to go take a look at where those lights are. And perhaps when we send out an informal questionnaire to the neighborhood, we, we direct them to where we have some of these lights installed. So, they can see what it actually looks like at nighttime. And I, I, I think ideally, any sense of light is going to be better than what they have right now. But they can get a good sense of what that looks like currently because we have some of those heads installed here. We, we've, we've been looking at them. We've tried different heads, different wattages. We, we've been playing around with it because there, there is no off-the-shelf kind of solar light head out there that, that certainly works for us.
So, the manufacturers don't actually make a Cobra head replacement for any of these streetlights that we have in town?
No, it's, it's more, it's not, it would probably be a replacement of the mast arm, of the Cobra arm and the head itself.
But they do make one that's...
You, you can find it.
For that, okay.
Correct.
But you're going to have less looms.
Correct. But less looms would be better than no looms.
Than no looms, right.
So, I would, I would certainly make it a part of anything we send out to the neighborhood. I would designate or direct them to a couple of those locations where we currently have those heads installed right now. And they can take a look for themselves.
Could you, could we state those locations tonight and they can go home on the way, then they leave here, they can look at them?
The, so, behind the, in the city lot on Artesia, behind Dunkin' Donuts, those parking lot lights in there that we...
Yeah, the new parking lot behind Shoe Kingdom. Next to Doughboys and Dunkin' Donuts. That's right. There's no electrical there, huh?
There's no electrical there, correct.
There's a trash enclosure with two lights, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
That's a good, nice dark area.
And also the Empower parking lot right here. We have one installed in the...
Next to the post office?
Correct.
So, the, between the Chamber Commerce Building and the post office, there's a city-owned parking lot there. Which one is it? The Ford, the Ford parking lot? You think?
Go ahead and continue. I'll try to find the location for you real quick.
So, the, behind Shoe Kingdom, that's when you got accused, Rick, of the having the solar light in your backyard. The old angel cake place.
Lynn, what would it cost? I, I appreciate the fact that we're directing people to see what solar looks like. If we were to use one of the light poles in the, I don't want to call it an executive track.
For a test.
And just for a test in that neighborhood, say, put it, have Santa Fe Springs come out and say, make one of those lights solar and give us the highest, most intense light you can get. And that way, the neighborhood could evaluate if that's a possibility. What, would that be an expensive proposition just as a test? And a conclusion if it worked? Have you any idea?
No. So, again, I can't necessarily go and just buy something from Home Depot and slap it up there.
No, I don't expect you to.
I have to, I have to find something that would fit on those existing mast arms that, that we have. But ideally, if I was going to try out one light, I think all in, we're probably thousand, fifteen-hundred bucks, something like that.
But I, I don't know if they're, in a big parking lot, they'll have the same ability to judge what light's about unless they see it in their neighborhood.
Correct.
But, that's just a thought.
No, because once I let you, then someone else is going to come. We play this whole... Well, I think what's going to, I, I'm only one guy up here, but I think, I think we're going to go down the road here of research. Yeah. You want us to make a motion then?
Can I make the motion to...
Yeah. You should make it. What about it? What else? Anything we really need to do?
The LED, just anything to try to keep them from having to go above ground wire.
Well, you wouldn't, so that would be your motion would be on thirteen A would be item three, alternative.
Item three, my motion is item three. Thank you, Ray. I appreciate the help.
I'll second that.
Yeah, Steph, Brian is arguing. Thank you, Steph.
I believe the, under the recommendations, the alternative is discussed and take other action. Could we maybe receive some direction for me as to what you're looking for?
Yeah, what's, we got, yeah, we'll get direction. All the above.
So, in the Empower lot, the, it's the light pole that's just south of the trash enclosure on the alleyway.
Okay. Audience, the other light is between the Chamber Commerce Building on the corner of Flower and Bellflower, the parking lot in the rear, the front, the, no, but there's a trash enclosure back there in the two parking lots between the post office and the chamber. It's the light further south by the trash enclosure is LED, is a solar, I mean. Okay. On that, okay, so...
We got a motion in a second.
We got a motion in a second. You guys heard that. It's three. Direction, do you guys, how about some feedback of direction to give staff as a body here on the motion? Because it's just alternative, it says.
No.
What alternative?
I guess we need to wait for the outcome of that analysis.
The, the light.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would, I would say, yeah, we have to wait to see.
But I think, I think we ought to have staff as a backup and work in parallel to see if the, you know, the underground conduit, if they can't pull new wires from street to, from light to light, or it's a, a dig up and thing, or is alternative, obviously, if we're doing this alternative, nobody's four wires in the air.
I, I think that's been explored already, right, Mr. Gurecki, in terms of pulling wires?
No, wires, no. Alternative three is nothing to do with Edison's wires up top in the air, visible.
I'm open to alternative three, but just a caveat here, the moment we do this, we're going to have to be willing to do this everywhere else, even if they're not our own, if, if they're not owned by us. So...
You mean, yeah.
The, the, the solars.
You mean, any other neighborhood?
Any other neighborhood, you're right.
That's no kind of dark...
Which, look, I'm all, I'm all for it. I mean, that, that's, that's the Pandora's box that we open up here. If, if we go with alternative three. Now, we could study it. If there's a viable path forward that's economical, then that's something we could take into consideration.
Unless, unless it becomes part of the lighting district to do solar.
We have options, that's...
Yeah, we have options.
That could be an option. So, for example, let's say, best case scenario, using your numbers, Mr. Gurecki, let's say one thousand dollars per light, times four, times fifteen, that's fifteen thousand. I think it's going to be more chewable.
Yeah, yeah, for, for the lighting district. Okay.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Fair enough.
So, I want to get a consistence of, of agreement up here on the, on Edison doing overhead lighting. When I made the comment that, when I opened up the meeting and said, we got Alonder Boulevard, and I said, if we lost our street lighting on Alonder, would we fix it? In their Edison slides, well, Edison would fix it, but yeah, we would, we would continue Alonder Boulevard, border to border, it would be fixed. And I use that as analogy of this track. It's underground already. Why do you go above ground? That's me. That's just one vote up here. That's why I had that analogy early on. I don't know. Do you guys feel the same way? Do you think we need to leave Edison on the table as alternative three or kill it right now?
I don't think we kill anything right now. I think we need to first find out if this solar thing is effective.
Yeah.
Otherwise, we're just talking through our hat. But if there's a way that we can hang fifteen solar lights up and got the right lumens that they felt, the neighborhood felt safe.
But what if that doesn't work?
Unfortunately, that doesn't work.
We need to have our backup plan in our pocket at the same time as if we're going to go underground and repair everything.
All right. And like the gentleman said, possibly...
We don't want to kick this every two weeks, come to a meeting and, or every month, the staff comes up with the idea, yeah, that's going to work. A test could take six months.
Well, at some point, we need to take, we have good information here from the people that live there. But I think all forty-eight of them need to be notified as to the potentials here. Do you want wires or you want to get an assessment? Assessment will be, we'll give them a range. The people that are here tonight seem to think that they can live with an assessment. And if that assessment, rather than being ten thousand dollars, could be a thousand dollars, that'd even be better. And that's something that we could work out through the whole city if it had to be. But I'm really concerned that the lumens won't be enough to illuminate the way we're hoping. But we won't know that until we do the experiment.
And the aesthetics of how much solar, how big of a, how much solar panels up there? Is it a big square thing?
Yeah, maybe it's uglier than wires. I don't know.
We have, yeah, we have different styles that are up.
We think of starting a lottery.
I can't talk to you from there. I'm sorry. It's just not how it works. Yeah, I'm sorry. But then I'm going to be talking to the whole audience. It's...
Mr. Mayor, if I might make a suggestion here. You have two options, both of which include powering the poles from one method or another, using wires. It sounds like the council wants us to explore the third alternative here, which could very well include some sort of solar option. What I would propose is we look at these two options, we explore that third option, we come back to you with a conversation that includes that more holistically.
Okay.
To look at all three of those options together. And then you can make a realistic decision with all of the information in front of you as to what those costs are for each of those options and whether you want to assess those through a district or not.
Would we want to include an information letter to every resident over there of...
My only caveat, and we can certainly do that, if you'd like us to survey the residents.
Is it time to do that or...
My only caveat is I, I don't know that we could have the costs of that until you kind of give us some direction as to what path you'd like to go down. Because if we powered them from above, the costs are one thing. If we powered them from, you know, undergrounded, that those costs are obviously significantly more. If there is some viable solar option that works and is workable in that area, obviously, those costs would be entirely different. Once you start the process of establishing a district, you do a full engineer's assessment to establish what those costs would look like. That'd be the time to ask those residents, are you interested in doing this or not? Based on these three options, here's what the costs would be. What would your interest be?
Yeah.
At the very least, we need to keep everyone that's here and, and the other forty people that aren't here informed of when we're having these meetings. Because I think this is a spattering and it's a great group here, but it doesn't give us as much as we really want to hear from everyone. So, make sure that everyone in this room is notified more than once if necessary. There's only forty-eight, so it's not going to break the bank if you trust the post office. But...
That's the big...
And then, Mr. Mayor, just for clarification, for point of clarity and for the audience, let's make sure we try the LED lights. I heard that a couple of times. Yeah.
Yeah, we don't, yeah. Yeah, we just, sodium is antiquated. You got enough direction?
So, do you need a motion or how are we going to deal with this?
We got a motion on the floor already.
Right.
There's neither the direction, motion in a second.
Okay.
The motion is on the...
Alternative three.
Alternative.
Solar on one poles.
Or LED, exploring the other options, LED, solar.
Alternative, that's alternative.
Alternative.
It's this roped, roped into alternative. Every, alternative is everything, isn't it?
It's kind, it's kind of open-ended. Well, I, what I was thinking is, other than selling it to Edison for one dollar, if we set up a lighting district, whether it's LED or solar, which is the worst-case scenario, it's going to be financially for the resident, residents here, the worst-case scenario for them is a lighting district, what they're going to pay. So, it seems like at some point in time, we need to do some kind of a survey.
In order to establish a district, it's not just a survey, you do a form of vote.
No, no, even without that, even without the lighting.
Oh, certainly. I, I would just be hesitant to do a survey and without giving those residents a full picture of what those costs might include. And I can't really do that until we have some indication of what type of infrastructure you'd like to put in place.
Well, as I suggested earlier, can we do some kind of a straw poll? Informal survey, are you willing to pay for the X number of dollars? This is the range, for example, of how much it's going to cost you if you're a lighting district before we spend the money. Because I'm just concerned in spending a lot of money for the study and then it's going to be voted down.
I mean, what I've heard pretty clearly is you want us to explore whether there is a viable solar option.
Right.
For individual light poles. Certainly, we can come up with some ballpark estimate cost, as we've come up with some ballpark estimate cost for the options presented in front of you. We can survey all of those and lay out each of those options for you, for the residents, if they'd like that.
Okay.
All right.
Fred has his hand up.
Good night, Laney.
Hey, Fred, have you spoke yet? Come on up.
Don't say executive. Hello, my name is Fred Taylor, and I just have a question. I heard Dan suggest perhaps putting in one street light as a test on the solar. It's funny because as he said that, I was getting ready to stand up with the very same idea. And then I had to leave the room briefly. And I came back yet and I heard someone mention something like fifteen of the lights. And I, my question is, if, if there were fifteen mentioned and we're going to be added to that area, were they going to be scattered? Or I see those two streets running east and west.
I think there was fifteen light standards.
Currently, there are fifteen lights illuminated.
Okay, well, if the fifteen of them were put on one of the two east-west streets so that it wouldn't be between two of the brighter lights, I think it would give a better feel to the neighborhood to know exactly what a series of these LEDs would look like on one street and then the series of regular lights on the other street instead of just...
No, from one to one?
Yeah, because the LED areas would be affected by the brighter regular bulbs.
I see your point.
Just, just a thought.
But you like the idea of an experiment, don't you?
Yeah, I really do. Again, I was told Cheryl that I was going to stand up and suggest putting one or two in. And then I had to leave the room. And then I came back and I heard fifteen mentioned. I go, even better. That way, they could do one of the streets and give the neighborhood a much clearer view of how it would look. Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. Is anybody else in the audience that hasn't spoke yet or like to speak? Okay. We have a motion on the floor in a second. You got that, Ms. Clerk? Motion by Councilmember Morris?
Yes.
I'll go by myself.
Yes, that's right.
And that's for alternative three as discussed. Call roll, please.
Councilmember Morris?
Aye.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Santino?
Aye.
Councilmember Coops?
Aye.
Mayor Denton?
Aye.
All right. Thank you, Rick.
You're all invited to a Christmas party at my house.
Right.
If you can find it.
Yeah. Hey, Bob, put the Christmas lights up.
Okay, everybody settled here. All right. Thirteen B, Mr. Smoot.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a discussion you all asked us to bring back, consideration and possible action to waive further reading and adopt ordinance fourteen forty-three. An ordinance approving zoning text, zoning ordinance text amendment, case number Zoda twenty-five dash Euro one, amending various provisions of Title seventeen of the Bellflower Municipal Code to implement the housing element and discuss the implementation of the state law permitting to accessory dwelling units. And I think Ms. Oba has a presentation for you.
Yeah, go ahead and give us a review on this one.
Thank you, Mayor. For some background, at the April fourteenth meeting, the council introduced ordinance number fourteen forty-three, which included several amendments to the Bellflower Municipal Code to implement the housing element. One of those amendments including amending the city's ADU regulations. As recommended during the public hearing, ordinance number fourteen forty-three applies the quote-unquote default California law for ADUs. This was intended to be more efficient given the legislature's decision to constantly change the ADU laws. The council directed staff to provide more information related to the maximum allowable square footage for ADUs and the maximum allowable number of units as it relates to units that are converted and new construction units. This table above shows what we currently allow, what was presented at your April fourteenth meeting, and the recommendation this evening. So, currently, the municipal code allows for a maximum of twelve hundred square feet for a new detached ADU. As presented at your April fourteenth meeting, it was stated that the maximum square footage is eight hundred square feet. It should be noted that Government Code Section six-six-three-two-one allows cities to establish a greater limit than what was previously presented. So, therefore, you can exceed that eight hundred square feet. And if you do, those regulations must be adopted via ordinance in accordance with our city charter. Until ordinance number fourteen forty-three becomes effective, the city allows a maximum floor area of twelve hundred square feet. It is recommended the council maintains that maximum. And again, if so, if you choose to maintain that maximum, then staff will bring back an ordinance for consideration at a future meeting. As it relates to the maximum numbers of ADUs that are allowed, and this is... As it relates to the maximum numbers of ADUs that are allowed, and this is strictly for multifamily dwellings, currently, we allow for a combination of conversion and new ADU construction units. As presented at your April fourteenth meeting, the proposal was to allow for either a conversion or to allow new detached ADUs, but not a combination of both. So just to cite the government code, it allows within portions of existing multifamily dwelling units up to twenty-five percent of the number of existing multifamily units or on a lot with a multifamily dwelling, not to exceed eight ADUs or the number of existing units on the lot. The recommendation this evening is to, is the same as what was presented at the April fourteenth meeting. And my next slides will show some examples of this scenario. So on the left-hand column, this is what we currently allow. So this is for a smaller scale development. If there was a lot that had a fourplex on it, currently, you would be allowed to have one ADU as a conversion, because that would be twenty-five percent of the four units, plus for new detached construction ADUs. So for a total, it would be nine ADUs total that could be built. Or there would be nine units total that could be built on the lot. If we were to go with what is recommended, it's either conversion or new construction. So for example, if there is four existing primary units, a conversion of twenty-five percent of those units is one unit. So therefore, a total maximum of five residential units can be on the lot. Or alternatively, it could be four existing primary units plus four detached new construction ADUs for a total of eight units. So as you can see with the new calculation, it would result in lesser, the lesser amount of units. In a larger scale development where there is a hundred dwelling units, our current calculation is twenty-five percent could be converted plus eight new detached ADUs for a total of a hundred and thirty-three residential units. Compared to what's being proposed tonight, if you had a hundred dwelling units and you did the twenty-five percent conversion, that would be a hundred and twenty-five residential units total. Or you could do eight detached new construction units for a total of a hundred and eight residential units. So as you can see with some of these examples, choosing to require either conversion or new construction is more restrictive and rather than allowing a combination of both. So as such, the recommendation is to allow for either conversions or new detached construction ADUs, but not a combination of both. And this would be in keeping with the government code. The recommendation this evening is to waive further reading and adopt ordinance number fourteen forty-three and to provide the director with further direction on implementing state law pertaining to ADUs. If the direction of the council is to allow a larger square footage than eight hundred square feet, then a separate ordinance will be brought back to the city council at a future date. And then the third option is alternatively discuss and take other action related to this item. That concludes my presentation. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Can ADUs have common walls together? Can you continue? So if you have a hundred-unit residential unit with fifty parking places, because it was built when we only had one car back in the day in the sixties, you had fifty parking spaces there. Could you put twenty-five units, it's twenty-five percent, on those fifty cars, fifty parking spaces?
Yes, so.
And so now you have a hundred and twenty-five units with no parking.
Correct. So currently, the state law says that if you do conversion, it would have to be of non-habitable space. So it would be storage units, laundry rooms, garages. Those can be converted to ADUs and the conversion maximum is twenty-five percent of the existing units.
Wow. It's going to be a problem when I'm dead. I'll be dead, though. God. I didn't see that coming. I was just picking on just no garages. There was just two cars at a time. I just whacked fifty. God. Okay, now I'm getting over my shock here. Who wants to go, got any questions of the staff, other than my shock question? He wants to be the closer.
You can wait, go ahead, go ahead.
I'm going to draw a stock.
He's going to wait you out.
All right, okay. But for clarification, so we have a similar, we have an ordinance that was read first on April fourteenth. So what's going to happen between now and if we will, the recommendation is to adopt the same ordinance, right? Except that there was a difference.
There was some changes here, possibly.
There was some changes. So legally speaking, if we adopt this ordinance, it's going to take into effect in thirty days.
That's correct. If you adopt ordinance number fourteen forty-three, which is the same ordinance that was presented when you introduced it.
On first meeting, at the last meeting, yes.
It, it, it becomes effective within thirty days.
Thirty days.
Right. If you, you know.
Change.
Go, if you want changes to the square footage, we will bring back another ordinance at your, likely your next meeting. It's actually already written. We just are seeking some direction from the council. It would also be coupled with an urgency ordinance, so that it becomes effective immediately.
Okay, 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 got you. Because in the meantime, I was concerned about somebody will just present, present a plan and then you need to approve it based on the incorrect presentation from the April four meeting. All right, good, good. That's taken care of. And then, Mr. City Attorney, are we okay with the awardings in terms of the presentation tonight?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we took a look at it between last meeting and this meeting. I, I do apologize, I was out of the country as you were aware when the staff report was being put together. And so during the presentation, the city manager and I were kind of putting our heads together on it. So we, we resolved it afterwards and, and what is presented tonight is, is an accurate rendition of what state law provides and what you can do.
Okay, all right. And Ms. Oba, can you, can you go back to the first, I think first, first two slides? The government code, there you go. So the government code, so there's a difference in terms of what is allowable between these two sections of the code?
Mayor Protem, yes, it's a little bit confusing, because one section is your default state code, right? So if you don't have your own ordinance, this is the minimum standards that you have to allow for.
Okay.
The other is if you adopt your own code. You adopt your own code, they also have standards that you can set, which are actually slightly different than the other section of the government code.
Okay.
So it does become quite difficult to go back and forth between those sections, but essentially, there is a slight difference between the two.
So the bottom line, it's, they're not inconsistent. They're just, they address different scenarios.
Yes.
So to speak.
Yes.
Okay. All right, that clarifies it. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay.
All right, Mr. Mayor, thank you. A couple of questions. First off, Ms. Oba, thank you for the presentation. If, if state law changes, does that mean we automatically change with it?
Correct.
So moving forward, unless we were to do an amendment to, to, to our, our municipal code?
So if state law changes, we're obligated to comply, regardless what our municipal code says. But the way this municipal code was written is that it incorporates the state law. So if any changes were to be made, we automatically defer to that code anyways.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, just a small asterix on that. The way it is currently set up, and if you do second reading and this ordinance becomes effective, then that is correct. We will comply with state law with regard to any changes in the ADU regulations or otherwise, as, as Ms. Oba mentioned. That said, if you adopt regulations that are different, remember this goes back to the conversation that we had yesterday and some of you pointed out that, hey, I'm advocating for lawsuits. Well, no, I'm simply pointing out that as a charter city, it is as yet unresolved whether a charter city must comply with the edicts coming down from Sacramento. Now, I observe that I would let other people fight the battle.
Sure.
Let Huntington Park, I mean Huntington Beach, fight that battle for you, but we are no longer a general law city.
Thank you, Mr. Burger. Okay, that leads me to my next question. It, it, can you walk me through why you're switching from maximum of eight hundred square feet to twelve hundred square feet from April fourteenth to today?
Sure. The, well, I will state that our current code allows for twelve hundred square feet.
Right.
So we currently allow for twelve hundred. It was adopted, I believe, in twenty-twenty when we had our original code adopted for ADUs. So essentially, it's to maintain consistency with what was originally adopted.
But you were recommending eight hundred.
We were recommending eight hundred square feet previously, and that was our understanding, which would be compliant with the default ordinance. But with that said, you can adopt something greater, which is why.
That is more flexible.
Correct.
Okay.
Which is why we're saying stay with your twelve hundred square feet that you currently have.
So again, to reiterate, we are able to adopt something that is more flexible.
Correct.
Okay. I, I'm hyphenating that, because I want to be, make it, help me make my next point. Could you switch to the next slide? Thank you. So, one more. So I think when it comes to the multifamily, I think one of the concerns that we have is, or ADUs in general, is where it is being done. In our single families, zoning and stuff of that nature, correct, Ms. Oba?
That's correct.
Okay. I, I want to, before I'm comfortable making a decision here, I think this scenario and the next scenario that you present, which if you don't mind switching slides, are two extremes, right? You have one that is a hundred something, you know, units and, and more, and then you have one that is a little bit smaller in nature. What I am going to propose, and I would ask just to study at this point, not necessarily trying to make a decision, is that when it comes to, if you can go back to the smaller rendition, Ms. Oba, on this section here, is I think that one of our concerns is parking, right? When it comes to ADUs, that they take away parking and, and whatnot. So what I would like to study, before we make a decision on this, is opportunities for responsible developers to have options to, if they provide parking, could, again, keyword could, opt into that second op, that first option, which is, you know, a maximum of four ADUs if four are existing and a conversion, if they have some form of ability to provide parking onsite. Things like that nature. And that's, you know, I'm asking respectfully that we at least study that option before we just make a decision.
Give them a carrot if they give us something.
Right, yes, exactly. If they give us something, we give a carrot, for, for lack of a better phrase. Because when I look at the next scenario, and Ms. Oba, if you don't mind switching again, I apologize, I understand this concern. This is a very horrific thing that could happen, and I understand wanting to us manage this and mitigate this. So I'm all for that. I don't think that there's any scenario in this scenario where they could provide enough parking to meet that demand. And so with that said, I mean, my recommendation tonight on, would be option three and would just be to postpone a decision on this item specifically and have a study with some kind of a carrot and stick approach to provide parking.
So would that be like a, you know, how we used to do density bonuses that are supposed to be, you can't do no more, right? So that would be similar as a density bonus.
Correct me, I think.
You have more parking, you get more density.
I think that's a good way to look at it, because effectively, what you're, what you're doing at that point is you're incentivizing the additional unit if they can provide.
Parking.
Parking.
But it's not allowed no more. We heard that last meeting.
Ostensibly, if you were within the TOD specific plan, for example, there are areas that we can't require parking at all. So you might run into challenges there.
Okay, you got that, right.
It theoretically, it may be possible in other areas, but to be honest, we'd have to study that further.
And that's where the, 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 where I'm focusing in on flexibility. When we go above state law and be more, when we're more flexible than state law, it allows us that opportunity. And that's what I'm asking for, is at least some time to study this and then bring it back.
I have a question, Mr. Mayor. So if we were to do that, what's going to happen to a potential application tomorrow?
What I would suggest is this, if you were to do that, and it's an excellent question, because you do have a timing question here. Number one, you're on a deadline for your housing element to implement, you know, programs in your housing element, including adoption of these ordinances. What I would suggest to you is adopt these ordinances as it's before you on second reading tonight, same as it was. And then if you want to explore the first one, we can bring back that urgency ordinance. If you want to take a little extra time to do that, yes, it probably, it may impact that scenario where someone may not be able to apply in that window. But you could ultimately come back and adopt another urgency ordinance separate. Basically, split out the urgency ordinance to be able to adopt the two things separately.
And Mr. Mayor, members of the council, to the city manager's point, unless actually we've issued a building permit, changes to the zoning and these types of regulations affect projects even if they're in application stage. So there is no vested interest for the, for the applicant in terms of, of a risk of the law changing. So until we've issued the building permit, there is no vested interest in, you know, for that particular project.
So with that said, I would recommend that we leave both intact the way they currently are until we have had a chance to study it. And it could, we could study it two weeks from, we could, I mean, two weeks from now.
Yeah, as recommended by staff in, in this new ordinance.
So if, Ms. Oba, if you go back to your previous three slides, three slides back, so, so you know how you made this recommendation that this stays the same as existing, as current? Now, if you don't mind switching to the next forward slide, if we could keep the current, leave everything status quo on these two items, adopt everything else, leave these two status quo current, essentially.
We should be, we should be very clear. In order to accomplish that, you would not be adopting the ordinance before you hear this evening. What you, in order to accomplish what Ms. Oba is presenting before you, you would be adopting the ordinance as presented on the fourteenth and presented this evening, which includes the changes discussed both then and this evening. And then we would bring you back an urgency ordinance and a regular ordinance, adopting basically to put it back where your code is today. Does that make sense? Am I being clear?
Why couldn't we just keep both current now?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we would have to reintroduce the ordinance.
Correct.
So the ordinance tonight is a second reading.
Second reading.
Second reading.
And adoption. So in order to keep it as currently in the municipal code, we would actually have to change substantively the ordinance that's on for second reading tonight, which requires a reintroduction of that ordinance.
Could we do a third reading?
Well, you can do a third reading, don't have any legal ramifications.
We're a charter city, though.
I, I very much like waving that particular flag. In this instance, it, it wouldn't work, which is why we are suggesting the, the way forward that has been suggested, which is adopt the current ordinance and then depending on the council's direction with regard to the square footage and the conversion percentages, give us direction on that and we'll come back with either one or two ordinances. For example, if you wanted to have a study in terms of the conversion issue, we'll bring that back at the same time that we had an ordinance for changing the square footage. Or if you want to study on both of them, we'll have whatever you want to do on those two items. The important part is that for purposes of implementing the housing element and keeping HCD happy, we recommend adopting the ordinance as presented last meeting tonight. And then between tonight and its effective date, we can come back and present you with additional information for your consideration. That would take effect immediately, because at that point, we would want to make sure that the timing of, of the effectiveness of tonight's ordinance didn't interfere with people coming in with applications or anything like that.
Director Mayor, if I can add, the ordinance before you includes several changes to the BMC as it relates to density bonus, law consolidation, all of that. ADUs was just one of those amendments. So there are other amendments in ordinance number fourteen forty-three other than ADUs.
Who wants to make a motion?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for the City Council Bellflower to waive further reading and adopt ordinance number one four four three, an ordinance approving zoning ordinance amendment case number ZOTAT twenty-five dash oh one, amending various provisions, subtitle seventeen, that's zoning of the developer municipal code to implement the housing element and give instruction to staff regarding uh council members uh council member Sanchez's request for their study.
I'll second the motion. I think we're working under the gun here. The staff wants us to get this submitted. If we wait to turn in our homework, the teacher won't want to see our our project.
Okay. The teacher be in Sacramento?
That's right, because I think they're calling saying, when you guys gonna submit? And we need to submit something, and I have no problem amending it after the fact, but I think
Exactly.
we need to deal with this on what we need to know has to be submitted rather than hold it up any longer.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask for clarification there? Um on the second part of that, I'm bringing these items back. Are you asking us to bring back the urgency and regular ordinances for both of those two sections? For your consideration and adoption?
Or just one section?
I'm just doing the ADU.
Just one section, just one on on the on the conversion.
On the conversion.
On the conversion.
And leaving the eight hundred at eight hundred is effectively without.
No, no.
No, no. In order to make it twelve hundred back to our existing code, we would need to bring you back that urgency and regular ordinance.
That's fine with me. You can do that and still submit, right?
We can submit the ordinance as adopted.
But we can always have more discussion on that.
Certainly.
All right.
You're bringing back two ordinances, then?
I can bring them back separately or I can bring them back together.
Essentially, the the fourth, so the eight hundred. So right now, we're passing it at eight hundred, and we're gonna bring back an emergency ordinance to make it twelve hundred.
If that's the direction, yes.
Okay.
And then the same thing for the other question mark, too. We can bring those back as one urgency ordinance, or we can separate those two questions out if you want to consider them independently. Entirely up to you.
I might as well separate them. It's cleaner.
Separate them, but on the same on the same agenda, same agenda, though, to keep.
And and if I may elaborate, I I really would like to see a consideration on those types of developments.
The large ones.
The larger ones versus the smaller ones. It cannot be just classified all lumped into one.
Related to a like a unit incentive related to parking.
Right, right.
Will that give you enough time for the study and come back to City Council?
I I think we can prepare that, yeah. I mean, the, go ahead. Well, I was, to answer your question, I think, yes, we can come back with the study. Uh if this is the route that you want to go down, my suggestion is to continue this particular item, do the second reading and adoption, but continue the agenda item to a date certain so we don't have to renotice this for for another public care.
Okay, all right.
That's fine. Yeah.
And that's gonna be part of the motion.
I'm confused.
Not continue the item.
We're gonna continue. Well, we're gonna prove it and continue it. We're gonna prove it, all right.
We know this.
We're gonna prove the whole thing with the continuance.
I can continue, I can clarify that for you if you need a clarification on the motion. As I understand it, Mr. Mayor, Pro Tim, the motion is to adopt the ordinance as presented this evening, provide direction to staff to return with an urgent, two urgency ordinances and two regular ordinances addressing the two particular issues at hand.
Along with waive further reading.
And continue the item.
So question, point of clarification. So we can't just continue this thing?
No.
We have to make, we have to adopt today.
Yeah, we have to adopt.
When's the deadline?
A week ago.
Wait, in fact, the the city manager just sent a letter to HCD assuring them that we had already introduced this particular ordinance to meet our deadlines.
Well, what is the deadline?
It's past.
Yeah, I wanna say February?
It's past.
It's past, right. We're late.
We're late to the.
We're late.
We're late to the table.
We don't want to be too early.
All right, all right, all right. Motion was made and seconded.
I approved your second.
Did the city clerk get all that for the motion?
The city clerk is requesting the date. I would suggest May twelve again.
And continue to May twelve.
It's gonna be a long, it's gonna be a long meeting, again.
Again, yeah. They're both on the same docket. Can we put the executive track on there, too?
Let's do so work.
Go for the trifecta. All right.
Might as well.
You good with the motion and the second?
Yes, and we will listen back to make sure that we hear that correctly.
Call roll, please.
Councilmember Morse?
Aye.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Jeez, that was a struggling eye.
Mayor Pro Tim Santinas.
Is it a soft eye or?
It was a struggle.
Uh, it's a yes.
Councilmember Coops?
Aye.
Mayor Dunn?
Aye.
All right.
Oh, man, the consent calendar. Hallelujah.
Uh, consent calendar. Oh.
Councilmember Coops, you have any conflicts?
Yes, I gotta get out on F. I have a property too close to the park.
Oh. Councilmember Morse, you have any conflicts? Oh, oh, you're eleven eight. Oh, duh, okay. Yep, thanks for keeping me straight. Let the record show, let's see, anybody, wanna pull anybody for, pull anyone for discussion?
Um, Mr. Mayor, since we're here already, can I pull, is Mr. Long here? Oh, oh, fourteen E, just for a question.
Fourteen E, okay. Anyone else? Okay, let's have fourteen E discussion, Mr.
Mr. Long, about this, just quick, couple of questions about this applicant for the kiosk A. Uh, is this is this her first time business?
I believe it is, their first time biz- doing this business.
Doing this business?
Yeah, I think they work in other fields, but this is their first time doing their own business.
Uh, okay. Uh, did she attend one of the, one of our seminars for entrepreneurs?
She did not. She heard about it through the uh one of the other uh kiosk tenants.
I think I would encourage her to attend one of those um seminars so that she can learn more about how to run a business and and so on.
We'll let them know.
Okay, very good. Thank you. That's all I have, Ma- Mayor.
And that's the only kiosk that has water in it to grow plants.
Correct.
All right.
Yeah.
Perfect, yeah. All right, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, I'll make a motion to uh approve the consent calendar with uh Councilmember Coops recused on fourteen F.
Second.
Motion on the floor by the mayor and Mayor Pro Tim seconded it. Without objection, that'll be the order. Council reports, anyone? How about Morse?
No.
Ms. Morse, no?
No.
Mr. Sanchez?
Oh, yes, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to report out, um last week on Wednesday, I attended uh the California League Legislative Summit. Um, I spoke in front of, um on behalf of our city and our region, I spoke in front of uh easily two hundred, uh two hundred and fifty re- uh leaders from across the state of California uh regarding HAP funding, which is homeless housing services funding that uh we have struggled to receive and retain for our support in our operations of our Hope Shelter, our new Hope Shelter. Um, in addition, we advocated for uh Prop um sixty-four? I forgot the number. Thirty, uh Prop thirty-six funding um and implementation for that to start sooner than later. Uh, I met with, on our behalf, I met with uh our Senator Archuleta, with Assembly Member Jose Salache, and actually a few other legislators from other regions um as a member of um the league on behalf of our city. Uh, it was a very productive twenty-four hours. I was in Wednesday morning and back on Thursday morning uh for our Bravo Awards, which was a great ceremony, and I just wanna congratulate Parks and Rec staff and anyone that part- uh participated in making that a successful event. Uh, with that, I conclude my report. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez. Mayor Pro Tim Sunny Santinas?
Uh, yeah, thank you, Mayor. I just wanna, again, I wanna give a big shout out to our Parks and Rec Department, uh public safety and all those involved in uh hosting the the Bravo Awards. It was well attended and uh everything went well. Also, a big shout out to the Bellflower Symphony Orchestra uh for having the uh young artist concert. It was um, it was phenomenal. Uh, we have five um youngsters who played different instruments and uh it it was wonderful. I've always said this, if you can only watch one uh one concert in a year, that is the concert that you should go. And finally, uh Councilmember Coops and I attended the hundredth anniversary Rotary Club. Uh, again, it was well attended with Supervisor Han as the keynote speaker. And Dan and I sign up for the next hundred anniversary celebration, just to let you know.
Yeah, in spirit.
In spirit. Okay, with that, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Coops.
Did you forget me?
Yeah, I did. That's why I got Pro Tim.
I wanna echo what was said about Bravo. PJ, you and your group do an outstanding job, and I want to thank you for it. You make us all look good. Uh, other cities envy what we have here, and it's due to your fine work and and Kristen and your associates there making it right and making us proud. And uh thank you so much for all you do. We've changed the operation a little bit from having it here in City Hall over to the grand, to the main, and it uh it's worked out well, and I'm so proud to be invited and be part of that. So thank you very much. And as was said earlier, we celebrated a service co- club in the Balfour, uh Balfour Rotary, who's been in business now a hundred years, and uh they had a great uh a hundred and a hundred and fifty people there, I bet, uh from all ages, uh talking about the history of the club and what they've done for the city of Balfour and how much they want to continue to operate another hundred years. But thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you, Dan. I don't have anything to say tonight, and I just would like to say thanks for coming. I see we got an audience still, and thanks for being here and and sharing your thoughts with us tonight. And with that, I would like to call for adjournment to the meeting, to the next regular meeting of Bellflower City Council to five thirty Monday, May twelfth, two thousand twenty-five. Adjourned.